Good evening. This is the caucus meeting for February 12, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, 260 High Street, at 5:30 PM, and it's 5:32. And the caucus meeting will follow, the council meeting will follow the caucus and close session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out in the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Proko, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Topics for discussion: Interview for zoning board of adjustment appointments. We will have the interview first for Christopher Alvarez. Is he here?
Hello.
Come on to the mic, please. Hello. Okay. So we just want you to go over more or less about yourself and why you're looking to be part of this board and your background.
Sure. Little background about myself. Lived my whole life here in Perthamboy, New Jersey. Thirty-three years old, born and raised, born here in Radisson Bay Hospital, right? June 30 of 1992. Little background about myself, professional side. Went to Rutgers University, ended up graduating in Berkeley College, one of the green international business. Worked for a little bit about a decade and a decade and six months for Wakefront Food Corporation. There I managed their international business side of the, of nonfoods, anywhere around $53 million. Was there for almost 10 years, held a whole vast of different roles, eventually left that organization, started my own brokerage or mortgage company. Were based out of Springfield, New Jersey, 140 mile inside Avenue. Hopefully opening up another office here in Perthamboy. It's gonna take some time because we have to do our due diligence with the state, get everything we need. My interest in joining the zoning board is obviously like anyone from Perthamboy, I wanna see the city grow. And I think that board is very instrumental and is very important for the city, especially with some of the decision-making, some of the residential, commercial side of things that need to be done here in town. I own multiple properties myself here within town, actually bought one again six months ago. So I understand some of the zoning laws, I'm not an expert per se, but I think with my analytical policymaking background, I mean, international business is not an easy, easy job to do. Traveled to Turkey, Southeast Asia, doing a whole bunch of business for Wakefront, so I understand policy and regulations. So I think I will be a great candidate for that position, for the zoning board. Again, strong analytical skills, policies, and all that good stuff that I'll bring to the table is gonna be very important, and my business background is also gonna be very important for that position. So yeah, little bit about myself there. I don't know if you, any questions?
Very impressive. Very impressive for your short age. It's nice to see that our born and raised adults now in here are coming back to, willing to be given to the community. Does anyone?
I do, I have a question. Being that you said that you wanna be involved with moving Perthamboy forward, what is your vision actually for the city? And what do you think you can contribute to as far as ideas?
I personally think, again, being the city by the bay, we have a lot to offer, especially with, you know, our downtown area, our bay area, that a lot of cities don't have that, don't have that, right? You have cities like Woodbridge, Carteret, great cities, right? But we're Perthamboy and we have a lot to offer. I think the business background that I have, I can look at things a different way. Obviously, we have New Colombian Restaurant right a block away from here. I would love to see that more in the city, right? Maybe if there's an opportunity for that. Again, I'm not involved with the board per se, but I would love to be in it, to sit down, look at things, analyze things, and if it's for the best interests of this community, obviously, there's people here that are here for the council meeting. I would love to see, you know, that grow and that develop within this town. Obviously, there's certain regulations, there's certain things that we, as a whole, right? It's not just a zoning board, but I think everyone involved within the community can sit down and look at and take advantage of the city by the bay that has a lot of offering.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else?
That was a great answer.
I just wanted to make a comment. Congratulations on investing in our town and for all you do for Perthamboy, it seems that the longevity within your career, and now you starting your other career and hopefully coming back to town is admirable. So why zoning board specifically as your first choice?
Again, me being a mortgage broker, buying property within town, I think it's a great place for me to start, right? Especially in this, in this type of field. I don't wanna say I wanna jump into the political world right away and do all these things. I wanna, you gotta crawl before you walk and then run, right? So I wanna start that way. Start in an area where I know I feel comfortable in, obviously knowing the investment side, me myself being owner of a few properties here in Perthamboy, I think that would be a great way to start, and that's why I wanna join that board. Because I'll be able to bring some of my business, you know, knowledge and background and policymaking in order to start there and have some sort of say, right, on some decision-making.
Perfect. Anybody else?
No.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you all, and good night, everyone.
And later on, we'll make a decision on, on the appointing, the position, and then you'll be, you know, you don't have, you can stay for the whole meeting, but we, the clerk will let you know.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now we have Joe Pavolsak. I hope I didn't kill that. Good evening.
Joe Pavelchak, just for the pronunciation purposes.
Okay.
Phonetically, Mr. Green at Amboy, I was P-A-V-L-C-A-K. It worked every time.
Thank you.
I'm a third, third generation in town. You know, my grandfather came here in the early 1900s, and, you know, we've, we've been there, been here ever since. I've been in the telecom industry, I just had my 41st anniversary, and currently I'm a project manager. But I've worked for Motorola, all the major carriers on different projects, you know, the top engineering firms, Ericsson, Bechtel. And basically, it was in cell site development, from the first ones that were being built in the, in the early 1990s to today, all the modifications for your 5G that everybody uses all the time now. I've been involved in that throughout my career. I've been to many, many zoning hearings for wireless. And of course, not wireless, the municipalities not being friendly to wireless, they were, we were always at the end of the agendas. So we'd have to, I'd hear, have heard a lot of different cases requiring variances for everything you could think of. I mean, probably an extension on a tower for the pillar of fire radio station out in the Bridgewater area, that, that one took like 24 months before it was finally approved. So I understand it's, not, not every application is easy, but I, I've been around it enough to know that you have to, you have to play by the rules unless variances are required and the professionals can justify that the variances are necessary, be it height, use, setback, all, all the types of variances that there are, especially, especially the D variances as opposed to the C variances. And, you know, I, I'd love to be involved in the town's growth, but, you know, my, my cousin is the city historian, so I think there is also protecting what Perthamboy has been about through its history. And I think we cannot let go of the past even as we make a better future. And that's pretty much why I'm interested in this position, is I wanna make sure that Perthamboy moves in a great way. Bert's in front of me had a very good observation about the waterfront area, the city by the bay. Yes, I mean, who, who hasn't grabbed off those piers? When I was a kid, you could still swim off the beaches. Remember my father taking me out when I was four or five years old to do that? And, you know, waterfront's been part of life and, well, the whole town has, really. And, any questions?
Same question as I asked the previous gentleman. You wanna be involved in the zoning. What is your vision specifically, and what ideas can you contribute to moving Perthamboy forward?
Well, I could tell you that what my vision isn't. My vision isn't of many, many multi, multi-story buildings popping up like in Jersey City, for instance. I, I don't think that's the right thing for Perthamboy. These, the huge buildings, even, it's, it just doesn't, just doesn't fit with the character of the town. I mean, we had that on, on Stockton Street and other places where those buildings actually came down because they, they weren't workable. So I think growth, but moderate growth, and, you know, the council writes the ordinances, they, they control the growth. And, you know, I don't know who the professional planner is for the city, but, you know, planners are a very integral part in managing the growth and making sure that the city's master plan is what the city residents really want. If that answers your question.
Thank you.
I had the same question as previously as well. Why zoning as your top priority?
Well, just because I've been exposed to so much of it, and I, I know it's a tough job. It's a lot, it's a lot of hours, a lot of meetings, but I feel that you can really accomplish something through the zoning board of adjustments. I mean, I've served the city before as a commissioner on the parking authority when, when we still had a parking authority years ago. And, you know, it's time for me to give back. I'm, you know, it's time to give back.
Okay. I had a question.
Okay.
So you mentioned growth. What does growth look like to you while also preserving its history?
That's a good, that's a good question. I mean, anything that's historic, historically preserved, you don't wanna put a 7-Eleven or a Quick Check next to something that's historical. So you've gotta keep an eye out for, for mistakes like that. I mean, you don't like that. But in the same token, you've gotta look at the land, what's the best purpose for the land? What, what serves it? Is it served by a, a development where there's multiple businesses, so you're creating jobs and opportunities for the workforces, and, and you've got, you're providing more services for the people? That's the kind of growth that, that I'm looking for, to make people's life a little easier.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. I wanna thank you for coming up today for the interview and to be interested to give back to the community. I know your background, your, you know, you have roots in this town, and it's good to see that people want to stay in this town and give back. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as chapter 255A Sec. of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about addition. Number two, ordinance of the city of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with, with Perth A Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at a portion of Black 131 lot 1 dot 03, Black 135 lot 1 dot 01, 2, 2 dot 04, and 3 through 28. Black 137 lots 1, 1 dot 01, 2, and 2 dot 01, Black 138 lot 1, Black 139 lots 8 through 11, 14, 19, and 21 through 23. Black 140 lots 1 dot 01, 1 dot 03, 1 dot 04, 2 dot 01, 2 dot 02, 2 dot 03, 2 dot 04, 2 dot 05, 2 dot 06, 3, 3 dot 01, and 4, and Black 236 lot 1, 1 dot 01, 2, and 12. 304 Front Street, 390 Front Street, property located on Front and Commerce Street, 38 Commerce Street, 393 dash 395 Rector Street, 47 Broad Street, 402 dash 406 High Street, 56 Fayette Street, 385 Rector Street, 362 High Street, 366 dash 376 High Street, and 34 Broad Street on the tax maps of the city of Perthamboy. Agenda, public comment. Citizen?
Just wanted to interject, would there be a presentation or is there representative?
No, there was no presentation scheduled.
Okay. Is there somebody here as a representative to just give an overview?
Okay.
Please. Representative, so that way we can just have an overview for ordinance number two?
We can have it at the public committee, uh, public hearing. Okay. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Reports. Follum Barcheski, tax collector submitted the monthly report of collections for the month of December 2024. Suply Clooney and Company LLC CPA report of audit of the, of the Perthamboy redevelopment agency for years ended June 30, 2024, and 2023. Jill A Goldie CFO Controller submitted the following investment reports for the month of December 2024. Revenue and appropriation status report as of December 2024. Current fund, water, waste, water utility, parking utility, harborside marina utility. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance of the city of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as chapter 255 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. And this is about deletions. And or, number two, an ordinance of the city of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designated restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as chapter 255 Sec. of the Code of Per, of the city of Perthamboy. And this is about amendment. Number three, an ordinance of, to amend an ordinance entitled vehicles and traffic. Ordinance number 194-78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as chapter 414 Sec. of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about parking near driveways. Resolution, R67 225, authorizing a tax assessor and special tax counsel to settle tax appeals for a refund to $5,000 and to institute counterclaims on behalf of the city of Perthamboy for 2025. R68 225, authorizing a refund in the amount of $75 to Edwin Arlekin, a tenant for the return of his key deposit for two keys with the Perthamboy Harborside Marina. R69 225, authorizing the Perthamboy Police Activity League, PL, PA, to host the third annual carnival to be held on Wednesday, July 2 through Sunday, July 6, 2025, at the Robert Willens Athletic Field in First Street and Zadowsky Parkway. R72 25, authorizing a contract with All American Ford for the purchase of two rescue support vehicles under NJCPA bid number BC dash bid dash 24 dash 43, co-op number CK 04, in the amount not to exceed $152,482 with 56 cents. Council President? Yes. The chief here? Yeah, the chief.
I didn't hear the question, I was standing there.
Okay. This is about the, yeah, the contract with All American Ford for the purchase of two rescue support vehicles.
Correct.
What is that gonna be?
Well, one's a Ford F-250 quad cab, that's the vehicle we have our plow for plowing our property and also going to emergency scenes. It's also our diesel fuel truck that has a diesel tank on the back to fill the apparatus at fire scenes and the boat. And the current one is replacing, going on 21 years old, and the body's starting to rust through. So that, that vehicle, I showed the, uh, Councilman Puccio. It might have its second life at DPW as a garbage collection truck, but it's for us, we, we've got, out used its purpose. And the second one's replacing a, a 22-year-old vehicle. It's a heavy-duty Ford F-450 quad cab truck with a utility body that tow's all of our trailers and also transportates firefighters to and from needbe.
Okay. Sounds like it's very much needed, then.
Yeah, yeah, like, so we, these are, we're almost at the end of replacing all 20-year-old vehicles. There's one more that's gonna be probably in the next month, and we're gonna be good with the auxiliary trucks for probably five to six years, so.
Okay.
This is the last couple of the oldest vehicles in the fleet.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you. Mr. Pucci, you wanna say something about your visit?
Well, all I could say is, is that, you know, he's absolutely right, those vehicles need to be replaced, they're very important vehicles, and they come in handy. And just even the, the pickup with the snowplow, they do their own snow plowing that frees up public works to do whatever they need to do without having to reroute to take care of the firehouse, they take care of it themselves.
Thank you. Thank you.
Also, like, during, snowstorms, not gonna, we don't really get them anymore, but like, if we have units assigned for first responders, so if there's a medical call, we'll ride out the pickup truck with two firefighters. So if there is a heavy snowstorm and DPW can't get there, we're assisting, getting ambulance to the scene, so it's, it's a lot of multipurpose stuff.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. R71?
Council President? It's okay. I just wanted to, Mr. Green, are you able to elaborate just on ordinance number three? I know initially a resident had reached out in terms of the Franklin Park Drive and safety and speeding, and I know there has been, yes.
Oh, number three about the parking near driveways?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Chief, ordinance number three, you can sit here. Ordinance number three with parking near the driveways and how we're amending it.
Yes, what this is going to do is we've received a lot of complaints about parking and so forth out there. We've done a lot of things, we've put a, some no parking here to corner signs, we've got some radar signs up there and so forth, we've tried to address the, all the parking issues up there. And what we've seen, not only there, but we have gotten from other parts of the city, is everyone complaining about people parking right on the driveways, right at the edge of the driveways. So if they're, if it's a tight driveway and you're trying to pull out, you got a tight street, or a larger vehicle, it's a little difficult to back out of your driveway and be seen and so forth. So with one of the residents that brought up this, this situation, they found out that Woodbridge had a, an ordinance, we reviewed Woodbridge ordinance, we viewed other municipalities around us, no one else has it, but Woodbridge does, and they have a 16-inch grace period, basically, from the edge of their driveway. It's, it's improper, illegal to park within 16 inches of that. So that's what we're looking to, to bring here to assist people getting in and out of their driveways. Uh, it would start, of course, with education because it's new, so we'd have, if you were to approve this, we'd have to put that out there, we'd get the information out, we'd get on our social media and so forth, and then the first steps would be to issue warnings for those particular things for a period of time, and then we'd go into the enforcement if it was repeat offenders.
Gradually, as it's.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that makes quite sense. Is, this is for both residential and commercial?
That's correct, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And since you're there?
Sure.
Can you elaborate on ordinance number one?
About deleting.
Mm-hmm. So I just want him to.
About that deletion of, um.
Oh, handicap parking spaces?
Handicaps, yeah.
Yes, there's many occasions that we need to do deletions. That's, we have an officer that's been going out and doing many of those. As a matter of fact, I think it's around 290 plus in the last couple of months that have gone through and deleted, whether it be things that are in the city ordinance that are no longer needed, or signs that were up that were maybe not on city ordinance, or, and also going through things that were never renewed and may have slipped or fallen through the cracks and so forth. So a good number of those handicap spots have been reduced citywide, and they're gonna continue to do that way. Tied in with that is another ordinance which, which is on also for the, like we did with the permit parking, we went electronic method and so forth, that's basically the same thing we're looking to do also with handicap, so that every year people are providing their, their documents. Because it could be if someone were to, depending on what timeframe they were able to fall into, they could get the handicap spot and then either move out of town or unfortunately pass away, and they could have that spot for up to three years, by the time it would fall into there and so forth. Minimum of two could be up to three years, that they would have that spot and not necessarily have anyone park there, or maybe their family are improperly parked there. So we're looking to streamline that so that every year we get a re-up on it and that we know, and it's all done electronically, nobody needs to come in here anymore or provide documents, it could be all done online.
Okay.
And I, I would like you, just for the public, because I know we asked this question to you when we were doing the agenda prep, about the concern that we have about seniors having problems doing the online, and what other ways you have for people to.
Assist them.
To, to do that if they have problem.
Sure. Yes, we have several ways. Clearly, the office and agency does a great job. On a regular basis, they have computer classes, things like that there. We know our city library clearly has, always has computers available to them and so forth if, if someone were not to have a computer. This can be done by your handheld phone, take a picture of the document, send it in and so forth. If the skills were needed to be there and they're not, they may have access to the, to the media or the way to do it, but not understand how to do it, then it can, of course, visit the parking utility over at the 151 Jefferson Street, and the staff there will walk them through the process and how to do that and, and get them, and how to upload the documents. We've had experience with this with the, the permit parking, the monthly permit parkings, and also residential parkings, which we do have a lot of senior citizens to take advantage of that for, on the area by the hospital and so forth where we have the residential parking. And a couple people came in, they had to have their, their sons or daughters or grandsons, granddaughters help them out with it and so forth, but that's been well over a year now, we're already past every month, been getting that and have been, been through the renewals, so that's, that's worked out pretty well. And again, same thing there, they can always come down to the parking utility office, we have a computer right there and the staff will go through all of that with them, right there if that's needed. So we have many, many different ways to be able to tackle that if that were, a technology were the issue.
You might as well stay there because.
Okay.
Something else is coming up. R71 225, authorizing a contract with Paramus Ford, Inc., for the purchase of 2024 Ford F-450 Super Duty 4x4 Regular Cab XTL with Jordan MPLNG Body and Accessories through Bergen County Co-op BC dash 24 dash 43, co-op number CK 04, in the amount not to exceed $107,974 with 20 cents. Also, R72, and maybe you wanna speak about both of them, 225, authorizing a contract with Paramus Ford, Inc. authorizing a contract with Paramus Ford, Inc., for the purchase of twenty-twenty-four Ford F-350 Super Duty S R W four-by-four crew cab, with options through the Bergen County Co-op B C dash twenty-four dash forty-three, co-op number C K zero four, in the amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand forty-nine dollars with eighty cents. And maybe you want to explain where that's going to, I know Mr. Pucci visited you and went over it, but just for the public, what that's going to replace, or how those are, those are the vehicles that you're getting for, for your department?
Right, I was actually in a question, what is this going to be used for?
Sure, these two vehicles will be replacing, just like the, the chief mentioned earlier, with some aging vehicles that he have, these are replacing two pickup trucks that are nineteen-ninety-two, three-ish or so, that's in, that's in use now with our fleet maintenance division, our garage personnel, and on those vehicles they have not only a plow, they also have a wheellift vehicle to move some of the vehicles around and so forth, around, if they were to stall out around headquarters and that type of thing, as well as a gas tank, like the chief mentioned, he has diesel, we have, more of our vehicles are gasoline, so we have both gas and diesel, but this would be for diesel, a gasoline tank on the back of the truck, and to assist, and then we also do that in a marine division for getting the gasoline and diesel to our boats and so forth, so it's going to be pickup trucks that are basically going to do the same thing, to replace those two pickup trucks.
One is, the, one is a twenty-twenty-four Ford F-50, why is one?
A four-fifty, yes, and the others three-fifty, yes.
Is that just one truck?
One, one truck, yes, is a four-fifty, the others are three-fifty, yes.
Why, why would it be, why is the price?
Well, four-fifty is a much larger vehicle, and it handles much larger weight, and it has that wheel lift like I mentioned on it, so it has the apparatus on that already, which is, the other one is, is a, for the most part, a basic pickup truck type of thing with some, some enhancements, but basically a pickup truck, the F-350.
And these are replacing older vehicles that we have?
Yeah. Yes, they're nineteen-ninety-three, ninety-four or so, two, three, or four pickup trucks, I can get the exact year for you if you want, but they're, they're early ninety pickup trucks.
Okay, okay, everyone is good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. R seventy-three two twenty-five authorizing submission of an application to the Elizabeth Gas First Responder Grant Program in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars with fifty cents for the purchase of a hundred and fifty tourniquets. R seventy-four two twenty-five authorizing an extension of the agreement with the Middlesex County Office of Human Services to continue services of the youth mentoring program through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five with the, with an increase of funding in the amount of five thousand dollars. R fifty, R seventy-five one twenty-five authorizing initiation of competitive contracting for kayak, kayak rental services. R seventy-six two twenty-five amending resolution R four twenty-eight ten twenty-four, accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the laboratory services for the running of water treatment plant, drinking water sampling and analysis to Eurofence Indian Analytical LLC in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, one twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Can we elaborate on this amendment, please?
Yes, Mr. Jimenez here?
Perez?
Perez.
Mr. Perez is here.
But this is required by state D E P, this is testing that's mandated, so it's a contract that we had, yeah, of course, to make sure our drinking water is safe, this is mandatory testing that's required.
Okay, but it says here, accepting a bid, with the, you know.
The listing of the bids?
Yeah, it's amending the resolution from previous, what's being amended.
Has it?
Good evening, council, this bid was already awarded previously, all this resolution is doing is changing the funding source.
Okay.
For the money to be used for the bid.
Yeah, I remember now, yes, okay.
So just changing the funding source?
Yeah, because it's an amend.
That's all it's doing, so we had certified funds from a different source previously, and then other monies were reallocated from another project, and we want to use those funds to pay for this as opposed to the, the previous funding source that we were using.
Thank you, I forgot all about that.
And the testing is required.
Yes, no, the testing I understand, but, okay. R seventy-seven two twenty-five authorizing acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four local solicitation in the amount of a hundred and four thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
That's every year. That's, what is that going to be used for, that grant?
We don't see that whole hundred and four thousand, this is the grant that we basically administer between all of the different municipalities around us, Woodbridge, Edison, New Brunswick, so it's, yeah, Woodbridge, Edison, all four of us, and it's broken down, it's broken down, the money is broken down by the amount of crime and so forth, and I'm happy to say, if you will, our, our solicitation, our actual money went down because our crime did, and the other municipalities are up, so that's why they got more money, we got less. So, in one way, okay, we're losing some money, but I guess for a good reason, in that particular way, and this is done by the federal government, they're the ones who assign that money and so forth, so that's going to be used for computer equipment, as well as our community policing unit for some things for the children, and for national night out and those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
R seventy-eight two twenty-five accepting a grant for Middlesex, from Middlesex County through the Arts Institute of Middlesex County for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five arts grant in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars. R seventy-nine two twenty-five designating certain properties identified within blocks fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, one twenty-two, one twenty-three, one twenty-four, one twenty-five, and one twenty-six on the city's tax map, which properties are bounded by Fayette Street, State Street, and Market Street as an area in need of rehabilitation pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA forty-eight, column twelve, A dash one. R eighty-two twenty-five rectifying the memorandum of agreement between the city of Perth Amboy and the Perth Amboy Fire Officers Association, FMBA Local Two Fifty-Eight, and approving a collective negotiation, collective negotiations agreement for the period of January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. R eighty-one two twenty-five consenting to the appointment of Rose B Morales to the Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency for a term expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. R eighty-two two twenty-five authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year twenty-twenty-five temporary budget in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. R eighty-three two twenty-five authorizing the city of Perth Amboy to execute the renewal of the shared services agreement with the Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency for a period of one year pursuant to the Shared Services Act. R eighty-four two twenty-five consenting to the appointment of Rafael Tafur to the rent leveling board for a two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. R eighty-five two twenty-five authorizing submission of an application to the Middlesex County Area Plan Contract for Socialization and Recreation of Older Adults in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. R eighty-six two twenty-five declaring the city of Perth Amboy a stigma-free community and supporting mental health awareness initiatives. R eighty-seven two twenty-five supporting publishing legal nurses on official government websites, and we have communications. Some more communications. Close session, should we have a close session for the interview? So that'll be personnel?
Personnel.
Personnel? Okay. R sixty-six two twenty-five authorizing a close session at the February twelfth, twenty twenty-five council meeting to discuss personnel matter, I need a motion.
Move it.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open.
Ten dollars, three, five, and one crocodile. This is amazing, we're going to give a thirty-five-year pilot to a billionaire, he can't use his money, Donald Trump's son-in-law, Donald Trump, who, I've seen every Democrat in front of the cameras complaining what he's doing to the Board of Education, or Education Department in, in Washington, and there's not a penny for any of the children. You laid off sixty-seven employees, I believe, last year, you have kids walking in that cold weather and in the snow to schools, but you don't care about that, because you've given away millions of dollars that should go to the school system. Now, are we going to raise taxes in this budget, and is the school system going to raise taxes in this next budget? Any question?
We don't have the budget yet.
I see you don't have the budget yet, so you're going to vote on a pilot, not knowing that if you're going to raise taxes, so you're going to give somebody a pilot, not knowing if you're going to raise taxes, now rumors out there that you're broke, you need money, you already see what's going on in Washington, you're not going to get it, but his son-in-law and the president is supporting immigrants, you guys are the Republicans, you appointed a broker for your insurance thing as a conservative, you're now giving a conservative guy a pilot. Didn't you listen to Joe Biden when he says, everybody pay your fair taxes? What happened to that? No, it didn't happen to that, you were making Assembly President and Assemblywoman Lopez the heroes, because they're the ones that, that are doing this, you know the county approved this, this law firm who negotiated this thing is the county's law firm, so they must be in support of this, so the Hispanic children, the white law firm, the big white guy in White House, but the Hispanic children have not gotten a penny, where's their money coming from? And are you going to raise the taxes? Are you going to raise taxes after giving this guy a pilot for thirty-five years? Thirty-five, not twenty-five, not twenty, thirty-five, this is incompetency, this is incompetency in the county, this is incompetence in the city hall, I mean, just because this is McGreevy's butt buddy, and if you're reading his book, it's all in there of how much money he donated to the McGreevy administration, and Nikke, who's McGreevy's Irish mafia guy, and it's in his book, clearly, straight out, this is the only reason this is happening, this is for two thousand and six, the county took care of Kushner when these people sued him by changing the judge at the last moment, he built garbage over there, he's going to build garbage again, and you know what, we're going to only have seventeen children, we're only going to have seventeen children in six hundred and two apartments, I got to bridge this up here, this law firm will sell you whatever they want, because they're making a quarter of a million dollars, when is it going to stop? If you don't know what the budget is, and you don't know if we're going to raise taxes, how do you approve a thirty-five-year pilot? Explain that, and if you don't know, if she doesn't know, not getting any much else, that you don't know that you might have to raise taxes because of shortfall, or the Board of Education doesn't know whether they're going to raise taxes now, that's incompetency, we're already six weeks into a budget cycle, six weeks, and if you don't know you've got problems, and you're not going to admit it now, how can you give somebody a pilot? Explain it to me, because I don't understand it, thirty-five years, yeah, he's going to give you money upfront, no money for the children, so are you going to raise the taxes? So the taxes is going to be your fault when the taxes go up, Kushner the billionaire, he's going to have fun, you've got people from the building trades, people that live in here, he does garbage work, complete garbage work, the unions don't want it, and your Democrats all said, you're union, you're all for the union, you're waiting for the union, you're here because McGreevy's butt buddy wants a pilot, and you guys don't have the guts to say no.
Can you keep it clean, please?
What?
Can you keep it clean, please?
It's clean with butt, it's sound, I just heard Democrats use the F-word fifty times today.
But not here.
On TV.
But not here.
But not here, oh, I know.
Anybody else?
Butt buddy.
Good evening, members of the council, council president, Ken Gonzalez, one-ten High Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey, for starters, I'm just going to comment aloud to the fact that Councilwoman Cruz asked aloud, hey, are we going to have a presentation from Kushner? I think that was a valid and a logical question to ask.
Hello?
Please, stop the clock.
Hello, hello?
Get closer to the mic.
I'm talking right into it, can you hear me?
Now we can.
All right, so, once again, the question was with regards to the fact that there was a presentation asked for by Councilwoman Cruz, and I was somewhat surprised that there's nobody here from Kushner to speak on their behalf, when obviously there's roomful of people who are deeply concerned about what's going to be voted on tonight, but I'm going to address three quick points, and the council's heard me say this before, but I really feel they are worth commenting on. I've spoken to some of the council members with regards to why is it that you guys are voting on this, and one person said, look, this has been voted on by redevelopment agency, it's been approved, we feel like at this point we have no choice because it's all pretty much done, but at the end of the day, folks, you are the check and balance to make sure that this is a good deal or not a good deal, there's nothing that says the council has to approve a thirty-five-year pilot, you have a contractual relationship with the Kushners, unfortunately, to help them, let them, you know, buy this property, hopefully develop it, but in a way that's going to be good for Perth Amboy, if the only viable way they can develop this project is with a thirty-five-year pilot, otherwise supposedly they're not going to make any money, then something's wrong with the proposal they've given to you, and you need to send it back to them and say, give us something that's going to be good for our community, because if any of you five have any concerns with this project, please, 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 exercise your discretion and vote no to this pilot, because you absolutely do have the right. Point number two, let's assume for a nanosecond that this deal is a good deal, which I don't believe, why does it have to be with the Kushner group? We understand they have a bad reputation with Perth Amboy, they've done bad before, we know all about the landings, years ago I sat in those chairs, as did former council president Ballot, and we listened to the public coming to us complaining about the Kushner project, knowing that they have such a bad reputation, not to mention also, just, and that's old history, more recently, just two years ago, the Attorney General of Maryland ended up having sued them, and they ended up paying out millions of dollars in penalties due to apartment buildings they bought over there, they have a poor reputation, and we know it directly, why on earth are we, and I'll give you guys sights to that if you like, because I'm not making it up, this is recent information. The other thing is, instead of doing buildings, why on earth can't we do houses? Listen, we're talking right now about allowing a billionaire to build up a huge six hundred and two apartments, instead of doing that, let's build beautiful houses on our waterfront area if we have to build something, listen, I'm a real estate attorney, I've mentioned this to you before, there's a huge desire for new housing stock in all of Middlesex County, wouldn't it be great to build beautiful houses that we could allow people, individual people to buy, live in for a generation, and then when they're ready, sell, and let them make a profit, let them buy into the American dream, instead of us giving our money to the Kushner group? Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Jane Whitkin, thirty-seven Lewis Street in Perth Amboy, I'm a member of the Perth Amboy Historic Preservation Commission, while we are a board with advisory power only, while we are a board with advisory power only, our enabling ordinance tasks us with attempting to preserve the visible remains of Perth Amboy's architectural, cultural, and industrial history, I have been a commission member for less than a year, however, I grew up in Perth Amboy, as did my parents. However, I grew up in Perthamboy, as did my parents. My husband and I moved back to Perthamboy two years ago, and we are living in a house built in the eighteen hundreds, which has remained in my family since it was purchased by my grandfather in nineteen thirty-eight. I've spoken at numerous city council, para, and planning board meetings over the last seven months in support of the nomination by the HPC of the former police headquarters for landmark status. I will not repeat those comments at length, but I will say that if you vote this evening to approve the ordinance before you, you will be making an extraordinarily craven decision. I would like to define the word "craven." You probably know what it means, but I'll say it for the general public. It means contemptibly lacking in courage and means cowardly. The HPC has repeatedly asked this council, its attorney, Mr. Opal, Mayor Kaba and his aides, para, and the planning board, why and when the rehabilitation of the police headquarters was removed from the supposedly unchangeable, inviolable, twenty-some-odd-year-old purchase agreement with the Kushner companies. When the concept plans rendering remain to this day on the city's website, we have never received a straight answer, and I'd like one. Maybe not tonight, but I'd like one. We have offered to have an eminent preservation architecture firm perform a feasibility study with their three thousand dollar fee to be paid from our meager budget. We have been rebuffed. We have identified sources of remediation and rehabilitation funding to turn the headquarters into a community facility. What happened to the study done by the late Jack Dudas? Why have you not listened to John Dyke and Gordon Bond, not only about the headquarters, but also about the Thomas Mundy Peterson home site? By the way, why has the HPC not yet been asked to contribute to writing historic element in the new master plan? Why is there no coordinated effort to include all relevant parties in planning for the next year's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the founding of our country with Perthamboy as an important player? On a tangentially related topic, why was a study presented to the planning board in January by Mr. Kurzenberger proposing an area in need of rehabilitation when there seems to have been no coordination with CME, which is in the midst of creating a new master plan for the city? Of course, the homes and commercial properties in this proposed AINR, not to be confused with an area in need of, what, redevelopment? This is rehabilitation, there's a difference. Of course, they're over fifty years old. Was there any care taken in establishing the boundaries of this area where the majority of the residences are well-maintained and where the downtown commercial structures might benefit from a relatively simple design ordinance, where facade improvement grants and tax incentive programs might be useful? What kind of urban planning are you truly doing when you destroy our city's heritage in favor of warehouses and apartment complexes of dubious necessity and dubious distinction? I was horrified when at the August council meeting, a planning board member, who I understand is also a condominium owner at Landings One, spoke in favor of Landings Two, stating that there would be no impact on the city's school system since people who could afford the rent at Landings Two surely wouldn't dare send their children to our public schools. Please vote against this ordinance, or at the very least, table it, so that the newest member of the council, Ms. Peralta, has time to educate herself regarding the history of the Landings project specifically and the Kushner companies in general. Don't succumb to the party line. In fear of a lawsuit the Kushners might bring, I hope that six hundred and two more luxury rental units won't be built instead of building critically needed affordable housing, or at the very least, having true code enforcement for existing housing. Let's not fold our tents yet. Thank you.
Thank you. You can leave.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for your time. My name is Tyrone Shields, 280 Poli State Avenue, Cliffside Park, New Jersey. I am here to address Agenda Item Two regarding to the transfer of land and approval of a thirty-five-year term tax exemption for the Kushner companies' five five-story buildings, apartments, and condominiums project. Redevelopment projects must be a benefit to the community, and I do not believe this project will benefit the working men and women of Perthamboy. There are no guarantees that the housing they build will be affordable to our community or that the hundred and eighty jobs they promise during construction will be quality employment for working families in town. I am a union construction worker and understand that a career in the trades is possible when employers have committed to decent wages and employer-paid health care. I can afford to raise my family because many construction employers in New Jersey have made and keep this commitment. Kushner Companies does not maintain this standard. Kushner has used irresponsible and unscrupulous subcontractor Concrete Rising on three past projects in New Jersey. Concrete Rising and its subcontractors have a history of safety problems and wage and hour violations. In April 2023, the New Jersey Department of Labor issued a stop-work order against Concrete Rising in Jersey City for unpaid wages. Concrete Rising settled the complaint, agreeing to more than half a million dollars in back wages, fees, and penalties for violations against a hundred and eighty-one workers. That's a hundred and eighty-one workers. They are now apparently debarred from public work. Additionally, Thomas Bertoli, a principal of Concrete Rising, was convicted of tax crimes and is currently serving a three-year probation. We do not need Kushner bringing employers like Concrete Rising to this community. I thank you for your time tonight and urge you not to approve the proposed land transfer, thirty-five-year tax exemption, or financial agreement, this pilot, until Kushner Companies commits to wage standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Ziri from the Landings. I've been here a long time. I went through the whole first episode with Kushner. He's a fellow who will do anything for his own dollars and not do anything for the community. What he did from day one eighteen years ago was he promised to build twenty-two buildings. The Bayview and the Landings were two of them. We've never seen another building built. The reason he pulled out of this thing, I guess about 2008, was he said the economy was poor. It didn't make any sense for him to go invest into building these structures with a poor economy and no sales available. False. What he did was he took his money away from Perthamboy and not built, but bought a building in Manhattan, the top of the sixes building. I don't know if you're aware of what that building is. It's a skyscraper. He bought that property with money that he should have invested into finishing his project here. Instead, however he got out of it, he just walked away from it, and the township at that point gave him their goodwill. He is an unscrupulous kind of an individual who'll do anything as long as it's good for Kushner. If you look through his history and you find out everything he's built in New Jersey or Maryland or wherever, not bought, but built, problems in construction, problems in roofing, problems in no sheeting, problems in window installation. With the Landings, we've had a lot of investigation take place on the structure, and we found faulty, faulty construction jobs. We found people who just didn't do the job, and he is totally responsible. He likes to point the finger to his contractors, but he is totally responsible. That's why when the Landings, a group of us sued him, and we won the case. But the bottom line is, winning a case is one thing. Giving this man an opportunity to do this over and over and over again is bad for us. We've made poor judgments. I liked the comment from the first gentleman that came up here and said, "Why are we feeling everything has to be done with Kushner?" He's proved to be a shoddy builder. He's proved to not fulfill his promises. He's proved that he is only interested in himself and will walk away from anything and let us sue him for it. That's his answer. "I got more money than they have, let them sue me." They'll get tired. We don't need to do business with a guy like that. We don't need to have him involved in construction again. Couple of things about the waterfront, in front of the Bayview and in front of the Admiral. At one point, we had those big floods, okay? And the water just rose up right into the Admiral and right into the Bayview, four or five feet inside these buildings. What makes us think that we can now build on the front of the property? We find that at one point, they said, "No more construction will ever take place there because it's too risky. There's too many problems that can occur." Now, I hear about him improving the bulkheads and improving the four-foot wall. What good is a four-foot wall when you had water come all the way up into the Bayview and the Admiral? What good is a four-foot wall gonna do when there's ventilation every twelve or fourteen feet, so there's a flow of water in and out? You're just slowing the process, but the damage will still be there. I don't understand why he is even contemplating getting permission from us and why we are giving it to him. At one point, before they said that the storm prevented them from doing anything, he planned on a little park in front, a park for the children, some sort of a recreational community. Now he wants to put up buildings. Once again, what makes us think he's gonna complete the building properly, as he's never done? All you have to do is go through his history, and I don't know if you've done that, but go through his history and the different places that he built and see the kind of problems they've had and the suits that were filed against him. That's number one. Number two is, he's just a wrong individual. He's a guy we should have no faith in, we should laugh him out of any situation where he even tries to give us an application. He has proved to be shoddy and unworthy, and that's my comment on him.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name, can you hear me? My name is Lana Seidman. I live at 368 Rector Street, Unit Number 213, at the Bayview, at the Landings. And I just was curious to know if you are aware that both the Admiral and the Bayview do not have a COO yet on our properties because of the lack of completion to this day, almost twenty years later, that those buildings have been built? We are, I'm on the board of the Bayview, I've been a board member since December of 2021, and almost every board meeting and every conversation through all of our management companies is, "Where is our COO? Where is Kushner's responsibility in completing the construction of our building, which the units that they still own are not completed, and we do not have a COO, almost twenty years later?" I just was curious, are you aware of that?
Go ahead, continue with your comments.
Okay. Well, if you are aware of it, to me, that's a little concerning that we're giving another project to a developer who doesn't see their projects through, who doesn't address what the issues are. There are homeowners in our buildings, both the Admiral and the Bayview, that have water leaks, water damage, all because of the faulty construction. So it has nothing to do with wear and tear or anything. The balconies that they built, the water is seeping in through those balconies, and it's not something that just happened, it's something that's happened over the past eight years that we've been addressing, even maybe more. And to think that they're gonna come and develop more property that they're saying is going to be, I believe I saw something someplace saying that it would be low rents or not these rents that in Woodbridge they're getting for thirty-five hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom. Supposedly, they're supposed to be affordable housing units, not low income, but affordable housing units, and I don't know what the guarantee that that's going to happen and what the determination is of what exactly is considered affordable rentals. Because for them to come in and make millions of dollars on our dime, on your whole community's dime and mental health and everything else that's gone along with it over the past twenty years is absolutely ludicrous. I can't understand it. But I really believe that there's some information that you should find out about, from the Department of Buildings, from the Fire Department, from whoever else has something to do with the inspections of our buildings. I think you need to do a little bit more diligence in understanding what is going on and maybe even meeting with the boards of both of our buildings and understanding what exactly it is that you are getting people into when they are gonna live in one of those houses. I think, I'm not sure you actually know, because it's not good. And there's a lot of people that have spent a lot of money trying to make their buildings hold because of what they've done, and I think you should look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Christine Quley, I live at 368 Rector Street, Unit 418. My name is Christine Quley, I live at 368 Rector Street, Unit 418. So I also live in the Bayview condos, originally built by Kushner. I moved here two years ago, and I've really enjoyed my peaceful life by the water, watching the boats go by. But today, my heart is heavy thinking about the corrupt construction company who is trying to convince the government of this beautiful town to build six hundred and two units along its tranquil waterfront. Overpopulation for the benefit of corporate greed is very apparent in New Jersey. I see new construction everywhere, and Perthamboy seems to be no different now. As we deal with extremes in weather, fires, and other environmental issues due to global warming, it breaks my heart that saving open spaces isn't considered as a priority. The land could have been a beautiful extension of Thomas Mundy Peterson Park along the waterfront for children to play and dogs to be walked. Or if something has to be built, as Ken Gonzalez said, why can't it be individual homes? Instead, more shoddily constructed apartments, which adds to overpopulation. Can the schools even handle more students? It seems like a far way to walk for the kids. Has the CSO infrastructure even been looked at? The waterfront already smells like sewage after a heavy rainfall. Have traffic studies even been completed? There are already long lines of traffic at the stop sign at High Street and Buckingham Avenue. Adding six hundred and two units doesn't just add six hundred and two people and cars, it could add more than double that. I feel like there are more sustainable options than choosing corporate greed. The qualities of life of your residents are in your hands. I implore you to please make the right decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Liz Sanchez, I live at 358 Rector Street, Unit 321. Actually have units at the Bayview and the Admiral. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I don't think you should approve the tax abatement. As you know, they took busing away from the kids this year, so that money could go to help for busing, as well as many other things in the community. A two-hundred-million-dollar project, who needs, you know, a tax exemption for that? They don't need that. As well, they are shoddy builders, as everyone here is gonna tell you tonight. I am the board president at the Admiral, and I can tell you, we've spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars trying to fix their issues in less than two years, and we're nowhere near complete. We're talking about water problems, you name it, we have every kind of problem there is there. Like Lana said, we don't have a COO. Can you buy a house in this city without a COO? A condo, just one unit.
I'll be here.
But you could do a whole building without a COO. Maybe you get a temporary COO, six months, eighteen months, but eighteen years? Come back and finish it. They could come back, I can show them what needs to be done in our building, because we talk with the Fire Department on a weekly basis, trying to get the amount of, the correct amount of sprinkler lines to go through the building in case there's a problem with the building, and we're paying for that now, why? They own property, they don't even pay their HOA dues. They owe us over three hundred thousand dollars. Give me the three hundred thousand dollars and I could fix the building that you sold to us that was broken. And you're gonna let them come back here and build more of that? Apparently, you're looking for the building to cave in like the one in Florida, because that's what's gonna happen.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Stephanie Bracida, 274 Davidson Avenue.
Louder.
Louder. Louder, because...
Stephanie Bracida, 274 Davidson Avenue. I'm here to talk about the 35-year pilot and the destruction of our historic resources. The old police station should be rehabilitated and reused, and an archaeological dig should take place at the Thomas Mundy Peterson House site for potential artifacts related to Thomas Mundy Peterson. Since the agreement hasn't apparently changed since it was tabled last year, and since no one ever discusses anything out loud or rarely answers, I can only imagine that none of the funding alternatives I've spoken about has been shared or even discussed. And for anyone who's looking for the proposal, the current proposal of the Kushner project, it's buried in the June 26, 2024 meeting agenda online. So I'm taking this opportunity to read my funding alternatives out loud here so that anyone whose wishes to consider or take note of it does so, and so that our historic resources are protected. There are funding alternatives to many of the amenities which are currently included in Kushner's plans, and they include the following. Using HUD's CDBG funds, public facilities funds, to cover the cost of rehabilitation of the station, of the old police station. Using New Jersey Economic Development Authority Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund to help reduce the cost of site remediation for the project, which is estimated to be $2 million. Using NJ Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Project to create the dog park and playground. Using NGDP Shore Protection Funds to cover the cost of the bulkhead. Using the Perth Amboy Historic Preservation Commission's annual budget to create a plaque slash monument dedicated to Thomas Mundy Peterson. And using Middlesex County Open Space Grant, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs' Local Recreation Improvement Grant, and New Jersey DEP Green Acres Matching Funds for the esplanade. I believe with these alternatives, the fate of the old police station and the Thomas Mundy Peterson House site can be renegotiated, especially when the site is being sold, $5 million discounted. And I'd also like to present the City Council with a list of signatures from a petition I started online to seek support in protecting those two resources. As of today, the petition has 456 signatures from Perth Amboy, residents of the rest of New Jersey, to California, and even people in Australia and Pakistan. Residents and visitors alike care about the fate of our historic resources. And while 456 signatures doesn't sound like much, look at all the people who have shown up today. Could you still vote to destroy our history and our historic resources? Please don't award this pilot until our historic resources are protected from destruction. And if anyone would like a copy of the information, I have a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on. I'm sorry, he's been waiting for his turn. You can come, you'll go next.
Those are the signatures from the petition.
My name's Ed Sofield. I'm up there, my grandfather, my uncles, we're all up there in this town here. I want to tell you something. I was a history teacher at Perth Amboy, 72...
I'm sorry, your name and your address?
Ed Sofield, Colgate Avenue, Perth Amboy.
Thank you.
I'm fourth-generation volunteer fireman like that guy out there, Mullin and Catano, same company, but clever. And I'm from Perth Amboy, and I'm here to help Perth Amboy out. I want to let you know that I'm from the Building Trades, the Middlesex County Building Trades. I'm also from the AFL-CIO with the state Middlesex County AFL-CIO, and I protect all the unions because Perth Amboy is a union town. And you know, with the Middlesex County Building Trades, I got a message for you guys. Your kids can come to the Middlesex County Building Trades. You can come to the Middlesex County Building Trades, and you could be an ironworker, a union electrician, a lineman who makes $200,000 a year with benefits, carpenters, laborers, painters, tapers, sparklers, basins, data technicians, Verizon workers, plumbers, tin knockers, sheepmanger workers, tire workers, and on and on and on. And we meet down there on Market Street once a month. And I got a message from the vice president of the Building Trades. If you've got your kids, boys and girls, need to come with us, we'll get you an apprenticeship. Kushner's coming in here, and he's coming here with minimum wages, but with toothpick construction, he's taking the money out of town. It's garbage. And he has... We're all of this because we're playing this guy in mom at the free home malls, because he's coming in here with people, and he's not going to help you out. And he has a directive on all the Dodge reports that we get that we're not going to use any union labor. No union labor. No money. No benefits for your kids. So I got some notes here, I'm going to cover them. By the way, in 1620, the pilgrims came to Fliddick Robben. In 1622, New Caligonia Park, there was a ship that came over here, right? Perth Amboy. Perth Amboy is the gem of the east. It's the gem. You can't... I'll put 602 apartment buildings with three parking when we have the best harbor in the country. You can't do it. 1622 New Caligonia...
Sir, you have to address the council.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We don't need... We need to take care of these kids, these children here. We don't need to bring more kids in here. We can't take care of all kids with the busing and everything. We got to take care of our kids first. Now, jobs for the residents. This is all about jobs for the residents. You can't all be teachers, firemen, public employees, so we're going to bring you into trades if you want to come here. We built everything in this town. We built that new high school with a public project works agreement. We got all union people, local people. Every school in this town was built, every hospital, every train station today. Everything is union. This guy's coming in, he's going to bust Perth Amboy. Okay, I got some notes, so I'm going to keep going here. I'm going to have a heart attack. Our guys get $50 an hour as journeymen. $50 worth of benefits, a pension, an annuity, a life, a life to work out of the union boss. Three to five years of apprenticeship, you go to school two nights. Three hours a night we go. You go to Middlesex College, you go one hour a night. We go three hours a night, twice a week, with 40 hours a day, a week, 40 hours. Okay, I got some notes here. Well, Kushner, 602 apartments, 602 apartment buildings, toothpick, vinyl siding, garbage construction. And I'm going to give you the solution. The solution to this mess is to call Ron Rio, my buddy, Shanti Neera, Charles Kenny, family lives down the street here, born and raised here, the Kenny family. Bring him to Perth Amboy, we'll talk to him. They're giving $500 million to Middlesex County College right now. $500, $500 million go there. We can bring him here. Craig Coughlin, Yvonne Lopez, Joe Vitale, we bring him here, we'll go down there, tell Kushner to give us the property, sell it, buy it. We'll get you a fine art student out here. And we'll have jobs for people in this town, and we'll have a waterfront that's accessible. We'll get you, we'll get you set up. We got the politicians, we got the freeholders. We got the people. Bring them in, talk to you, we'll get you the money. Don't let this happen. Please don't let it happen. God bless Perth Amboy.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he was waiting.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jorge Vargas.
A little louder.
358 Rector Street, Unit 509. Jorge Vargas.
Your name?
Jorge, J-O-R-G-E, Vargas is my last name?
Vargas. V-A-R-G-A-S. Couldn't hear him.
You don't... J-O-R-G-E. Vargas, V-A-R-G-A-S.
She just couldn't hear you.
Okay, all right, okay. We moved to Perth Amboy last July. My wife and I were looking for, and we found this beautiful place to come and live here. And we saw the little park in front of our building, and the bay, and the gym, and then little by little, we start learning that nothing works. The gym is garbage. We try to talk to somebody, nothing works. And which is worse is that the more we talk, the worse everything seems to be. I believe, I may be wrong, but once the new apartments are built, there's going to be a new assessment, and the property taxes on our apartment and many, and the rest of them probably will go up to no fault of our own. I mean, that's something that it shouldn't happen from what I've heard. This company will not do anything right. And I personally, and my wife as well, will really hope that this Kushner company, developer, whatever, is not giving this trial for 35 years and build something that looks most likely that will be the same low quality and is going to overpopulate the area so beautiful that we have now. I don't know. Is this something that we're going to vote? Who's going to make the final decision? That's something that I'm wondering. Who's going to make the final decision to give the Kushner the final yes, go ahead and move on with your project? Or we're going to vote? Are we going to vote? Or our vote doesn't count? I don't know how it works. Can you...
The City Council will make the decision.
So we're not going to vote?
Tonight, we're voting on it.
But we're not, we're not going to vote?
No, we're listening to you.
So if everybody complains, it doesn't necessarily mean that the Kushner is not going to be given the job. It doesn't mean that necessarily, even though everybody complains. Is that true, or I'm wrong?
No.
There's no guarantee, right? There's no guarantee that if everybody complains and nobody wants them to build, there's no guarantee that it will happen, right? Because it may happen, even though we don't want, we don't, we are against. So our vote doesn't count at all. Hopefully, they don't, they don't do that. Hopefully, you guys vote against that. Thank you.
Can it get ugly?
Hi, my name is Nancy Kessler. I live at 163 High Street. I've lived in Perth Amboy. At that address is my first home, and I'm still there, more than 40 years later. My husband and I moved here as young homeowners, buying our first home, and as I said, still here. I have three sons, all of whom went to Perth Amboy Public Schools, and know some of you who've been here for quite a while. A lot of their friends, I guess they're all millennials, are very interested either in staying in town or moving back to town to raise their families. And I heard earlier, when you had the applicants for the zoning board, that a number of council members complimented them on the fact that they want to give back to their town, that the younger young men want to come back to... You were so pleased that he came back to town, that he wants to give to the town. And many of my kids' friends would love to do the same thing, but they have been unable to find affordable, single-family housing, whether it's rental or even more for purchase. We know that the stability of communities has increased when you have a significant percentage of homeowners. And I grew up in a family that rented, my parents rented almost their whole lives until they moved here, and then ended up purchasing a condo. So I have nothing against rentals, and I think it's a very important part of the American dream. It provides people an opportunity to start their lives and to build wealth, to build stability. But homeownership is a critical part of that, too. And we know that that's something that's becoming more and more scarce. Perth Amboy's been a place that people have been able, young families have been able to move to historically, but at this point, my kids' friends have had to move to Ford's, to Holkland, parts, other parts of Woodbridge, to South Amboy, and further away because they haven't been able to find affordable, single-family housing in Perth Amboy, much to their dismay. And it's something that I feel very sad about as well. So I hope that you all give serious consideration to what you're hearing here today, what I'm sure you've heard, I know you've heard at other meetings before, and really think carefully about the kind of growth you want here in Perth Amboy, the kind of stability all of us want, the opportunity we all want our city to continue to provide to young people who would like to come here and have families here and become a part of our culture. And that you will realize that for the reasons people have already stated, the proposal before you now is not one that's in any of our best interests. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Orlando Perez, Perth Amboy here. Let me just make a little quote. In politics, nothing happens by accident. And if it did, you can bet it was planned it that way. Why am I saying that? Here we go. This thing with the redevelopment, it's nothing wrong. There's nothing wrong with redevelopment. It's great, wonderful. But remember one thing. Be careful you don't get involved in somebody's dirty laundry. That's what happened here. It was great, it started nice, and it started getting ugly. Nobody wanted to put their hand in dirty laundry and clean it up. They correct something, they work at the thing, but you look at it and listen to the people here, oh, this is something here. One voice means nothing, but a many voices means something. This is what happens. The dirty laundry is coming out, and it goes back from 2000. Pay-to-play, that's right, pay-to-play. The little brown paper bags, wine and dine. Now, when it comes time for the finger-pointing, that's what we got, is a finger-pointing contest. Mayor after mayor, city council after city council member, it's this. No, fix the problem now. You have to fix it now, correct it. It's not perfect, but you might have a solution. This is what it is. And if you expose the dirty laundry, if you're an elected official, you expose it, they're going to smear you. You're a bad person. You should have been councilperson, or whatever, because you exposed the truth. There are good elected officials that know that town is going to be in harm's way, but they get smeared. And you know how they get smeared? Because I met a woman that got smeared. They put a little dead rat on her door. That's how they do business. They run these smear campaigns, whether you're for it or against it. They go to Costa Rica and get their offshore bank account money, dark money. That's what's be used to smear a politician. If he or her is concerned about the project, they don't want to stop it, yo, slow it down. Let's work out. Where's the oversight? Where's the impact study? That's how it goes. Once you get involved in this, sometimes there's no way out. Believe me, there's no way out. It's a... Politics is a dirty game. I'm going to be honest with you. It's a dirty game. Be careful. And I've seen a lot of good people in their community try not to stop it, but hey, you know, let's work something out. And their little rat goes in their door. That's what happened. They use a smear campaign on you. You're good people, I understand your concern, you're pobby, but you know what? Do me a favor, do all of us a favor. Take your time with this. We're not going to make fun of you, we're not going to hate you. Take your time with this. Go slow with this. It could be done. I've seen another town being done. Like I said, nothing wrong with redevelopment, don't get me wrong. Watch, watch. It could turn into a very dirty laundry game. Thank you for listening to me, and thank all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is this the general open or general public portion?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not in public hearing portions of the ordinance?
Good evening. This is Virginia Morales from 745 Barry Avenue. I hate public speaking, but being a resident here, born and raised 49 years on Sunday, I felt the need to be here to speak up on behalf of everyone that is new here, that was born and raised here, everyone that's coming here. I'm a teacher at Rose M. Lopez. We have struggled to keep that dual-language program, and unfortunately, it might not stay that way. stay that way. There are many issues that are going on with our educational system, with our, just, I won't even go into that. But with that being said, we have all of the traffic concerns, we have the accidents, the people that are getting hit, that are dying. I mean, it's just insane to see what is going on in this, what used to be a small community. I love this city. I don't want to leave. I'm a Realtor with KW by the Bay in Perth Amboy. Barry Rosengarden literally was built this, helped build this city. And to see what's happening, it's, it's scary. It really is scary. I would love, my dream would be to see this place, to see Perth Amboy somewhat like Asbury Park, but even better. I looked into their waterfront redevelopment plans, and just some of the things that they have here are preserve the character and history. That's what we need for Perth Amboy. We are a historical community. That is the proprietary house, everything about Perth Amboy. The fact that we were the first, the first city that was the, you know, we were, I mean, not, we were Trenton. That was us. And we are losing all of that. We're giving it away for money, for I don't know what reason. And I know most of us live here, so we really do want what's best for Perth Amboy. Take your time, as some of the other people said. Make Perth Amboy a great community to live in all year round. Generate new tax revenue, yes, for the city, but do it wisely. Spur economic growth through employment opportunities. I, I want, I don't know if he left already, I would love for you to come to our Rose M. Lopez.
Address the council.
I would love for him to come to meet our children, for Read Across America, for, you know, for the, making children see that there are other careers besides everything that we see, you know, downtown. Perth Amboy, it's beautiful to see people coming to the armory, and to the barge, and to the ice cream parlor, and to come for the Perth Amboy artworks, but then they leave. There's nothing else at the waterfront. The, I don't know which building it is, if it's Landings, or that entire area, the lower front is empty. There's a gym there, and I guess it's not in use. I have a dream to have a cat cafe. Of course, I wouldn't be, be able to afford it. I don't know if that company would even welcome a nonprofit organization to see if we could do something. But nothing is finished, apparently, and we're trying to continue something that's unfinished. So it just doesn't make sense. None of it, none of it makes sense. We need to make Perth Amboy better. We need to develop it. If, I mean, there are so many people that are displaced. Mary Beth Olive, at one point, she had a, an organization where homeless women were staying in a place, and unfortunately, that didn't last long. I'm sure some of you know about that. Why can't we do something like that? Why can't we have other businesses so that people can come and not just have Portuguese or seafood, but they can come to an Italian restaurant? They can come and have entertainment, maybe, I'm not gambling, but anything else, anything to make Perth Amboy the great city that it is, that it was, and that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want people to understand that this is not just about ordinance number two. This is the public portion, that you can speak about anything that, that you are, that is happening. So I just want people to understand that, just in case there's somebody here who is here for another purpose. Go ahead.
I'm the new neighbor. My name is Olga Vargas. I live at, close by, here, in the Admiral.
You need the address. We need the address.
My address. My address is three five eight Richter, Richter Avenue.
Richter Street.
Richter Street, five oh nine.
Okay.
I'm not going to repeat anything. All the files that you have to take into consideration are in my bag. All these people are bringing you the information, so you will have a better understanding to what is going on here. And when I was sitting there, I was looking at this room, and I think what it's, what is, the important thing here is what is behind you guys. The honor, the respect that Perth Amboy is claiming to be taken to consideration about building and the way to build in our country, in our city. I can read there, city of history, city of the future, Perth Amboy. And we can see there, it's looking at us, Thomas. And we are, we can see that everybody's listening now, and you are also listening. So all the, all the beautiful paintings that our kids, Yulisa, Yessenia, Wilson, Tito, from the Perth Amboy High School, that is telling you guys, take care of our children, our education. Don't give the thirty-five percent taxes. You know what I'm doing. I'm a kind of emotional, but that's what I wanted to say, just to look at the slogan for our city. City of history, city of the future.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Red Hawk at twenty-four sixteen Sunnyville. Maybe someone should tell Dyke, stop wasting his time promoting history. Maybe somebody should tell historian Dyke to stop promoting history, and maybe take Perth Amboy off the list for next year's two-fiftieth anniversary celebration, since possibly getting rid of the former police station, which should be included. This, this administration does not seem transparent. Stop destroying the city's history, stop letting old buildings go. There's a petition to save the former police building. Quite a few people, that five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant could be used for improvements to save the former firehouse and update that. It's solid, there's nothing wrong with it. It makes no sense to find new land on a smaller lot. Those two buildings can be an asset and benefit to the city once again, as it did before. Just get rid of the first state squad and build three one-family homes, and keep the existing house, and move the impound cars to DPW property. The clock church on High Street was going to be demolished years ago, while it's still there. The HPC hasn't been treated right. They need a stronger ordinance, they need better support from the administration, they need legal representation. Former mayors haven't provided funds in the past. Councilwoman Rose says we can't call the city historical if we keep taking away buildings. The council president, Maladi, said she is, she was looking forward to support and participate in December of twenty-twenty-one. I haven't seen that, I haven't heard from that. This is sad that the city hasn't invested in any way. It's time to add the community center and the museum space as a historical landmark. Cobb keeps saying city of history. When he was on the HPC board previously, he has wasted grant funds, giving money to someone who doesn't deserve, not giving money to the HPC or the Salvation Army. Too many people have been prioritizing the proprietary house way too much, been there and done that. There's other historical sites that need more attention and should be treated equally. And the former police station is a perfect fit for, has potential as a perfect fit to be saved, for new purpose for the community. And Detroit, out of all places. They are restoring an old building here. They have a restoration program, way worse condition than the former police building. And in Saraville, they have saved their old historical building, but they do not have a plan on reuse of it. This apartment project does not benefit the city then or now. The city cannot, the city's infrastructure cannot handle this type of project. There is not enough fire protection, the issue of snow removal, flood zone blueprint issues, rent costs, quality of the space, no tax, not keeping its promises. Construction jobs need to stop in this town. We have enough. Those guys can go anywhere for jobs. Those type of guys can go anywhere, putting more stress on city services. Anything historical must, shouldn't be messed with. A building is more important than Sunshine Alley. The city should give the building to the state as a historical landmark and have them cover the cost. It is the last historical building that symbolizes what the city was built on, industrial legacy, industrial revolution. Save the old farmer firehouse and reopen as a second firehouse. Keep the former police station and metal power, and include that in the master plan. Kushner does not care about the city. Possibly sixty years suffering, bad impact here. This is not the Jersey Shore, and it sounds like they want to make this city into the Jersey City or Hoboken. Please cancel this, or change the plans, or take the land back. This is fraud. This is not the solution. Stop having people have crazy ideas, and some power people, redevelopment agency people, maybe should be replaced. See these current people have lost respect and everything in this past. Why create the preservation committee board when the administration does not support the city history? If the building is lost, there is no more HPC, there's nothing else left to talk about, preserve, or promote the history. City hall staff has told the HPC that they're interfering with this issue when there is their duty. If, if lose the buildings, then the city will fail again, and the HPC will fail again. Why have a historian? Maybe it's, Jesus Christ. City must save the former police building, tell a story. It's a perfect fit for community programs, workshops, PAL program, museum space, extra library space. The library is cluttered with items. It's pretty much a storage, a storage place, the library, art gallery place. Cobb said, becoming mayor, becoming mayor is time to invest in the history and embrace it and try new ideas. There are gangs here in this city, three gangs that I know of. And you want to bring people here and bring, build more apartments? Don't sound right. You should apologize to the fire department, because they've been waiting ten years for equipment come twenty-twenty-eight. So the city is in danger the past six or seven years.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening to the council.
You can bring it down.
I can bring it down. This is my first time speaking at a meeting like this. My name is Mary Giles. I live at thirty-seven Dana Court, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. I am a homeowner, and I also pay taxes here. And I'm just appalled at the very fact that you would allow someone like the Kushner company to come to this town once again, because once someone has shown you who they are, you need to believe them. You have all the evidence that you need, that this person, this company, is not upright. This company has proven itself to be not trustworthy and all about money. And to sit here tonight and hear all of these people here, and they're telling their truth, and there's evidence to back up their truth. We have a right to speak on what goes on in this town because we pay taxes. Why would you allow the fox in the hen house again, when he's already went in there and ate all the chickens? Amen? Here's, here's the fact of the matter. A snake will always be a snake, no matter how many times he sheds the skin. He's still a snake. This company has proven itself to us and to you. And yet, we find ourselves this day, still deciding whether we should allow him back in this city again. I would ask you to really consider what you're doing. Our children are at stake. The future of this city is at stake, because once he comes in and does the damage, from listening to what they've said, you never get it fixed. You need to give some considerable thought to what you're about to do. We pay taxes, but you're going to give them thirty-five years where they don't have to pay any taxes? My taxes go up, but they don't have to pay any taxes? They say they're going to hire people from here, and we all know that's a lie. They say they're going to put up new units, but the units they put up, we can't live in them. They're put up for other people, not for the people here in Perth Amboy. So I would, I would ask you to consider this proposal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jason Plongus. I'm at three fifty-eight Richter Street. The early two thousands, they intimate-domained all the property on the waterfront for Kushner to take over, right? They didn't do what they were supposed to do. They let the, the properties just go to hell, right? They just abandoned everything. Now, now we're twenty years into there, where they have abandoned it. Now you're proposing that they're going to take the, there's employees of a hundred and fifty in the laundry on Richter Street, and you're going to intimate-domain that property and close it down, and eliminate a hundred and fifty jobs from local people that live in Perth Amboy. Ninety-nine percent of those people walk to work and live, live in the community. And it's a hundred and fifty employees there, and you're going to intimate-domain that property for Kushner to come in and build six hundred units? And, I mean, it's pathetic to me. Also, we were, it was brought to our attention that we, that on High Street, they changed the water valve a few years ago, and the water pressure can't even keep up with the units that are in there now. Now we're going to add six hundred more units. Is there any proof that, that the water pressure could keep up with, with six hundred more units at all? Was there anything done, a study done on anything, looked into the future? Because it was brought to our attention, that we, we live in the building. It wasn't brought to, to your attention, obviously. But I just don't understand how you could intimate-domain property. You should have taken that property back from Kushner and did what the city needed to do with that property, the right thing to do. Continue the waterfront as a park waterfront going all the way down from the armory all the way through, right? Not to stop and hand it to this. You don't, you don't build, you don't build in a place where there, it floods all the time, that waterfront. When, when the high tide comes in and the wind goes in, water blows right on top of that where a front street is. Now they're going to put a five-story building there with a parking garage? Does that make any sense? No, it doesn't at all. Like I said, the water pressure, our building can't keep up with the water pressure for our own, our own fire system, right? But now we're going to add six hundred and two units onto the area, and it's going to add, it's going to help out with the water system. Come on, it's, it's ridiculous. And Kushner, first of all, like she said, you're letting the guy back in. Is there any other bids or proposals from any other companies out there that came across and said, hey, here we go, we have a better idea. We're not going to take thirty-five years of tax-free. And who does a two-hundred-million-dollar project and isn't going to make any money off of it? Right? And now you're going to give them tax breaks so they can make more money on a two-hundred-million-dollar project? That makes no sense as a businessman whatsoever. If I proposed something and said, oh, I'm going to do something, and I'm not going to make any money, but the bill's two-hundred million, it doesn't make sense to me. And if you think it makes sense, and you vote for this, I swear, I will vote, and I will vote every one of you out here as much as we possibly can. I'll tell you that right now.
Thank you.
Good evening. Reverend Donna Stewart, president of the Perth Amboy area branch of the NAACP. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. It is Black History Month, and the theme for Black History Month this year is African-Americans and Labor, no longer free labor, obviously. But listening to everyone speak, there was questions that came to mind and thoughts that came to mind, and I jotted down some notes. And it's purpose, plan, people, and passion. What is the purpose? Why are we going backwards? If we're the city of history and city of the future, not the city of foolishness. We don't need to go back. The purpose is just to make money? That should not be the plan. The plan should be to honor the people that elected you to office and to serve, the constituents. This room is full, there's people in the hallway, and people are waiting because they're passionate about it. And yes, we have to address the council, but we want the people behind us and around us to hear, because this is who we are. We are a community. We're standing together. We're a community, and we're, we're trying to do that. So we're hoping that you listen to what's said and what's being said. I was looking up online, even after the last time I came here in twenty-twenty-four, about Kushner, and the articles are still the same. He is a crook. He is related to felon forty-seven. Birds of a feather flock together. And it says here, "In twenty-seventeen, a confidential settlement was reached between Kushner Companies and thirty-two condo owners in the landings at Harborside Community after the residents filed a consumer fraud lawsuit alleging construction issues such as water infiltration and insufficient parking. Kushner Companies then suspended all constructions of the landing, but maintained ownership of the property." Ridiculous. That's foolishness. That's not moving forward. We're supposed to be talking about dreaming. We should not be living in a nightmare. We should not be going back. We need to move forward. Everybody has an opportunity to make mistakes, and we should learn from our mistakes. Council members, please learn from the mistake of the previous that allowed him to come here in the first place. He has done this up and down the East Coast. We need to put a stop to it and put a stop to it now. We need to remember to help those who've helped us, who've supported you, your events, your candidacies, your programs. People here have done that. Even if they didn't agree with everything you did, they still support, and they still come out. It's cold outside. Parking is ridiculous, because obviously, there's still snow on the grounds. People are walking distance farther and farther, because there's not even parking around here, to come to the meetings. But we're here, early, and we're determined. And we do have a plan. We do have a plan. The plan is like the last person just said, not a threat, but a threat. The plan is like the last person just said, not a threat, but a promise. Elections do come up. There are records of votes and who voted and which way. Let's move Perth Amboy forward the right way. I also want to say for those who watch the Super Bowl and you watch the halftime show, Kendrick Lamar said it, Kendrick Lamar said it. They're not like us. Kushner, he is not like us. Felon 47, they are not like us. Let's stop paying criminals to come into town if we're trying to clean it up. They are not like us. Be mindful of what you do and please be mindful of your vote. We want to support you and your efforts, but we want you to also listen to the people that are here. All of the voters in Perth Amboy could not fit in this room tonight. A lot of people didn't know this specific thing was going to be on the agenda. But I'm telling you, there's a representation of all of the communities in this town. Remember, remember, let's be a city moving to the future and not a city of foolishness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sagar Patel. Hello? You can hear me?
No, go ahead.
My name's Sagar Patel, I live at 358 Rector. I think everyone said, you know, the obvious. Just, uh, wanted to say like, when I first started buying a property here, I looked, I drove past a waterfront. I was very hesitant, but I drove past the waterfront and I saw how beautiful it was and what kind of a gem it was and that's what drove me to purchase here. So hearing that you guys want to kind of build on that area, first of all, it's dangerous, right? It's logical and we all know it's dangerous. Number two, who's going to live there if, if people can't afford it? So you guys are just going to drive people out? And number three, the first speaker actually said it. How are you guys voting on a budget or how are you guys voting on something where you don't have the budget? Right? That's kind of common sense. I think you guys shouldn't, don't ruin this town because I've actually grown to love this town. It's a beautiful town, it's a small town, very homey, comfortable, a lot of people actually depend on it. So it's not worth it, don't do it. Instead, take the money and invest it into the kids of the future, right? Like it says over there, I didn't even notice it until the one speaker pointed it out, but it's kind of valid, right? City of the future and city of, oh, sorry, city of history and city of the future. So I'm sure all of y'all have kids. Don't do that, don't do that to them, don't ruin it. And just, you guys are all smarter than that. Don't, don't play into the puppet game just for some clout. That's really it.
Hi, William Patrick, 790 Harnett Street. It's great, you're all up here, you have a job to do. I would never, ever allow a 30-year pilot, a 35-year pilot. That's, that's saddling, that's handcuffing. All the future council and mayors that come into this town, how are they going to handle a 30-year pilot? Where's the tax dollars coming from? Most of you are, are homeowners. I can't imagine how you could agree to a shoddy builder, a convicted felon coming back into town. He's built two buildings under a former mayor, there were four sale units. They had structured parking, they were made out of brick and he did a shoddy job and instead of manning up and taking responsibility for the shoddy work, he pointed fingers at his subcontractors that it was their fault and not his. He's a convicted felon. Now, I understand when I was sitting up there as a council president that Joe Vitale and Kevin McCabe, who represented the, the, uh, used the carpenters as a stepping stone to higher office. You know, they pushed me to meet with Charlie Kushner. And I met with him here in town and all he wanted was his 30-year pilot that Bill Northgrave is pushing, that Craig Coughlin wanted and, uh, you know, Ivan Lopez. All of them wanted Charlie back in here to make his money. He's going to make millions here and you don't need to give him a, any pilot at all. He didn't build those two buildings with a pilot. Got to say for a former mayor who was a convicted felon also and, and had, and had unindicted co-conspirators sitting up at that table that you're sitting at now. We got another mayor who may end up being a indicted felon as well. We don't know that yet. But do you really want to be unindicted co-conspirators? I know two of you have been indicted and convicted of ethics violations while you sat on the Board of Education. I know that. So why don't you do better now that you're here? Don't go for this pilot, it's insane. We're getting nothing out of this. Give a tax break to all the homeowners in town. Most of you, if not all of you, are homeowners. You're not living in apartments. An apartment is not a stepping stone to a, a greater economic future for you. We are out of balance in this community, we have too many apartments. We need homeownership, we need single family homes, duplexes, you know, even, even condos. But a homeownership. He's going to build another harbor town closer to the center of town. I've already, the last time I was up here, I spoke to all of you. They want to say, people want to save the old police station. Sell it for a dollar to a, to an organization in town made up of good, responsible people with, with some resumes and let them go after rehabilitating it. Give it to a historic trust made up of the people here in Perth Amboy. Sell it to them for a dollar. I know the fire department wants to expand, all right? The, 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 the uniform department originally said they didn't need seven fire companies and, and six firehouses. They could do it with one centrally located house. That was 12, 15 years ago. Now they want another firehouse and they've been, they chased Morton Salt out to find out they couldn't use it there. When I was sitting up there, we bought property on Amboy and Insley, nothing happened there. And now they want to build it and, and of course Memorial Firehouse across from the new, new, uh, high school. They can't build it there or wouldn't build it there because they were going to build a, a road, a connector road that never happened. Now they want you to buy the property on Fayette and, and High. Rehabilitate the firehouse that's already there on High Street, this old central firehouse and let them use that if they need a second firehouse in town. All right? Thank you all. I think I have 17, 16, 15, all right? Do the right thing, this should have never seen the light of day. I didn't allow it to happen when I was sitting up there. You should, you know, and the vote is not going to take place right now, it's going to take place in the next meeting tonight after 7:00 PM when they come back from, uh, closed session. Remember that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, can you hear me? Can't hear myself. Good evening, um, uh, I'm with the NAACP Perth Amboy and I just want to just, you know, I'm listening to everybody. I don't live in Perth Amboy, my name is Michelle Burwell. But I just wanted to just say a quote, that real leadership is leaders recognizing that they serve the people that they lead, right? And I know it's very hard because, you know, being in the, in the political, as someone said, it is very grimy and, you know, cutthroat and specifically in this county, it is very almost like a mafia type of thing. So I know it could be a little scary, you know, to stand up for something. But it is very important, especially during this time with the, the change and shift in our federal government and so much of the federal funding that we're using to stabilize our cities will ha, has the possibility of not being in existence anymore, that you really take in consideration about giving someone a 35-year tax abatement, right? And most people don't know that when you talk about education and things of that nature, that that is a portfolio that comes from federal funding and state funding. And so if there is in fact a shift, as we all can see as it relates to our federal government, we need to be mindful about how we spend our money and how and who we give tax credits to. Because inevitably, everybody's taxes are going to go up when they start dismantling Department of Education, right? And now the money that, right now, you get $26,714 per pupil in Perth Amboy and you don't have transportation, right? And so what does that look like when you give someone a 35-year tax abatement? And again, leadership is about you being mindful of the people that you are leading, right? And I, again, I know it's hard, it's easier said than done when you're not in the, in the shoes. But when you took that oath, you decided that you wanted to be bold and you wanted to stand up for something, there's no way in the world, even if you didn't know anything about Kushner, your constituents have told you everything, even some who are in fact living it as we speak. I just ask that you get the, that you, you know, pull on whatever power you need to, to be able to make a stand for something, right? I know it's difficult, but stand up and fight for the people that you're supposed to be representing because that's what it's about, right? It means, it means nothing if you are not willing to stand up. It's not about taking pictures, it's not about cutting ribbons. When, when you cut a ribbon and it does not benefit the community, it's not about that. It's not about going to parties, it's not about you being with Mr. McCabe, Coughlin and Lopez. It's not about that, it's about them, it's about us, right? And the only way we can make a difference is when we, when you as leaders recognize what your role is. And again, I know it's hard, but please take a moment and think about the oath and what you've committed yourself to and our children and our future and stand up, even if you're the only one standing. Somebody stand up, right? And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Pious Sylvie, living at the Admiral Building, Unit 401.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Dr. Pious Sylvie, and I live in 358 Rector Street, the Admiral Building, I'm also part of the board of this building.
358 Rector Street.
I want to echo every one member of the community and I would like to add up that adding more building, more apartment will not solve the problem that the city of Perth Amboy already have in term of pollution of the bay. I dare you to take a swim. I dare you to eat any fish. If you add up your population and not fix the sewage, we're not going to get better. Please do not vote for this, respect the environment, respect the population. Thank you.
Catherine Maspus, 180 Market Street. Look, we have one of the 10 most historic cities in the United States and you are going to bulldoze the police station. That's not helping our history. And I just feel that Perth Amboy is better served not doing this. And I have one other question. Who is in charge of the oversight of a building? Who's responsible to say a developer does what they're supposed to do?
To build? To build? Anything to be built, it goes under code enforcement once they decide to, to build something, right? Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else about anything? Anything, it's not just about the ordinance. Seeing none? No, you already spoke, thank you. State your name and your address.
Mi nombre es Teodoro Torres. Vivo en el 264 Davidson Street.
I'm sorry. Okay. Espera un momentito. Is there someone here that can translate for him?
My name is Teodoro Torres.
Vivo en el 264 de Davidson Street.
I live at 264 Davidson Street.
Y vengo a hablar de, de un problema de handicap que necesito.
I am here to speak on an issue regarding a handicap parking that I am in need of. I have a problem in my left part, left part of my body. I have been a victim of two strokes.
Y yo estoy luchando para que le me den un parqueo frente de mi casa que sacaron.
I am trying to challenge or fight for a parking spot that was in front of my house that they was removed.
Y llevo ya cuatro, voy para cuatro veces que me lo han negado.
And this is my fourth time that I am appealing because my permit requests have been denied.
Y por favor, yo necesito que tengan compasión de mí.
Please, I want there to be, you know, consideration of my need.
Porque yo lo necesito.
Because I, I do need one.
Porque cuando me voy a parcar en mi casa.
Because when I go to park in front of my home.
Tengo que parquearme por allá por la Fátima bien lejos y no puedo andar la con casa.
I have to park near Fatima and it's a long walk and I, there's no parking in front of my home.
Y hay mucha gente que tiene casa en, en ese sitio y parquean afuera en vez de estar parqueándose en el trago de ellos.
There's many people that live in that neighborhood and instead of parking in their own driveway, they park, you know, wherever they want to.
Por favor, yo necesito que me ayuden.
I really need you guys to help me out.
Muchas gracias por su ayuda.
Thank you for your time and your help.
Okay, thank you. Is the chief here? No, he left.
Unfortunately, the chief, we have a fire and both chiefs are there attending to that situation. But as you know, council president, the council can make an exception to the rule. I can give the address, it's 3, because this is public information, that's why I'll give it, 397 Division Street. And they're finding it right now.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else wants to speak? I know that some people want to take a break, but anybody else is going to speak? Seeing none? I need a motion to close public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I know there's a lot that has to be said from this side, but, um, right now people need to have a, a bio break. And, um, we're going to have the closed session from here, we are going to the closed session. So I need a motion to go to closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, after the closed session, we're coming back to the council meeting. That will have the public hearing about the ordinance that had been spoken about tonight and then, um, boom, in the council meeting that will happen, okay? Thank you. Are you ready? Okay, we're back from closed session. I need a motion to come out, resume.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we, I need a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
You want to add the resolutions?
Okay, so we need to, to add to resolution for the, for the, for the zoning, um, appointments that we interviewed tonight. So we need, that will be.
Resolution R 88.
88 for the, for the four-year, that will be, we have a regular and an alternate. The regular is a four-year appointment and the alternate will be for a two-year appointment. So we have 88 and 89. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, now we start the council meeting. Okay. Good evening. This is the February 12, 2025 council meeting. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, 260 High Street, right after the closed session and the caucus and closed session. Right now is 8:26. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individual present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and for the pledge of allegiance. Please, Lord, look over this governing body to make the right decision for the, our city, for our residents and for our children. And also pray, we pray for those that are in need of food, shelter and anything to have a decent life in our city and abroad. Let's pray for those that are, for the troops that are abroad defending our freedom and those who are in our nation protecting us. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we had the interview already, so we go to the ordinance, public hearing. Five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Or number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designating restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as chapter, as chapter 255A of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about addition. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, anyone wants to speak on this?
Good evening. William Patrick, 790 Hornet Street. So you're the governing body of the city of Perth Amboy. You make the laws that everybody lives by, okay? So that gentleman that was up here earlier today with the cane, the handicap guy, who has been denied and denied and denied, you have a right to give him a waiver and give him a handicap spot. That's your right as the governing body. You represent us, you represent him. He needs help. You're able to say to the police department, you know, give him the handicap spot. You're, you have that power, okay? Or you could just ignore it and just move on.
We won't ignore it. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Oh, you want to speak on that? Okay. I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Number two. Ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Meadowssex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Perth a urban renewal LLC for the property located at, at portion of block 131, lot 1 dot 03, block 135, lots 1 dot 01, 2, lot 2, I'm sorry, 2, 2 dot 04 and 3 through 28, block 137, lots 1, 1 dot 01, 2 and 2 dot 01, block 138, lot 1, block 139, lots 8 through 11, 14, 19 and 21, 23, block 140, lots 1 dot 01, 1 dot 03, 1 dot 04, 2 dot 01, 2 dot 02, 2 dot 03, 2 dot 04, 2 dot 05, 2 dot 06, 3, 3 dot 01 and 4, and block 236, lot 1, 1 dot 01, 2 and 12, 304 Front Street, 390, 390 Front Street, property located on Front and Commerce Street, 38 Commerce Street, 393 dash 395 Rector Street, 47 Broad Street, 402 dash 406 High Street, 56 Fayette Street, 385 Rector Street, 362 High Street, 366 dash 376 High Street, and 34 Broad Street on the tax maps of the city of Perth Amboy. Before I open it to the public, I just want to say we did listen to everything you have mentioned before. It's your decision whether you want to come up and speak about it on the same topic. And we are here just to listen, so I just wanted to say that. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, go ahead.
Tim Mal, 359 Brooklyn Avenue. You listened, but you didn't hear. This is all about the county. This is Lowpiles, Coglitt and McKay and Kushner and McGreevy. It's, this is all about that. You don't make the decision here because you're giving away money. If that, you would table it and find out whether you're going to raise the taxes first. No money for schools? There's only going to be 17 children in there? This is sad and disgusting because you have no guts to go across and do what's right. Anybody here, right here? Nobody spoke up. Where's the mayor? It's such a good deal. He got no cojones. He's not here. Where is he? There's the problem. Where's the mayor? If this is such a great deal, where is he? You had a person come up here and said, there's no CO for that building. Where's our, where's our code enforcement? Bring him up here and say, how come there's no CO? Come on. Bring him up here. If you had the guts, you'd find this stuff out first. That's what you find out. Where is the CO? Why are these people still trying to fix their building on the first Kushner project? Why? Why? Because he's a billionaire and he's in bed with the politicians? All you got to do is read his book. It's right there. McGreevy admitted it. Here's a guy, the first Kushner, that set up his brother-in-law and went to jail for it. He's convicted felon. Everybody's blaming Trump as convicted felon. Well, you're going to give a project to a convicted felon. How do you Democrats speak that? Booker sat here on Big Blue saying, oh, July 17th, I mean, January 6th people got, got off. But wait a minute. You've got a guy working on campaigns that got caught. You're a maintenance friend of the police. Assaulted a police officer, used homophobic language against a police officer. And he's still working, he works on your campaigns. So you are Democrats, so-called, but I doubt it because you look like you're Republicans. And that's what the county has turned Republican. I mean, Trump got 1,500 less votes than Kamala Harris in Perth Amboy. Why? We got a law firm, that's a Democratic law firm, who's negotiating Kushner. They do the same thing in Woodbridge. But check the deals out in Woodbridge. Did you ever check any of the deals we have in Woodbridge? Councilman Puccio, you know the council president over there. Do they give money to the schools?
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe so. But no, Perth Amboy, the Hispanic children don't deserve. They don't deserve anything. They don't deserve busing. They don't deserve teachers. They got to walk in the cold because billionaires get pilots. I've been raised, gets pilots from the beginning. There's no money for the children. You're supposed to respect the children. But no, not in this town. Oh, the state will pay for it. Yeah, well, the state's going to change. And if you got to raise taxes, it's on your back. This guy does not deserve a pilot. He doesn't deserve to build anything. He's disgusting. His plan is disgusting. And his council is disgusting if you voted for it and it's incompetent. Because if you turn around and raise taxes after you give this guy a tax break because you're going to get a little bit, that's disgusting. You don't have no cojones to do what's right. This is all because of the county. And I know Toricelli, Rosie Garden, and everybody wants this project. Toricelli, where did he go? Jail. He's down in the bars trying to get Kushner's property. Where's Toricelli? Went to jail. When he came out of jail, he appointed his wife to spend his, his campaign money. Men deads. No, Toricelli went to jail too. And then they just went to jail too. Trust me. And that's what we have. Hey, wait a minute. You Democrats, you had the head of Democratic Party in Seabird. What are you going to jail for? Money laundering? Take care of prostitutes? That's what this Democratic Party is doing. You're puppets. You're complete, total puppets because you got no cojones to do anything. You don't. And it's for the children's needs. Taxes go up, mine down, I don't care. I haven't seen you freeze. I'm lucky. I'm over. But you guys got nothing because you're, you're knocking people out. Now, you're just pointing somebody in the planning board. What did he say? What did he say? I bought houses in town. He's not an owner. He's not living. Non-ownership. What ruins a town? Non-ownership. Roll up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, good evening. Robert S. Goldsmith of Greenbaum Rowe Smith &amp; Davis. I grew up at 259 High Street. Went to Perth Amboy High School. So I've been doing redevelopments since 1978, representing both the public sector and the private sector. And Councilwoman Cruz asked a remarkably insightful question. What presentation has been made to you? What information has been given to you? And my observation is little if any. You, this is an important obligation you have. And you have every right to expect and demand information from the applicant, information from Para, because there are two fatal flaws in this agreement. First, there is a master lease. The statute, the long-term tax exemption law specifically requires that a pilot cannot be less than 10% of annual gross revenues. This pilot is based on a master lease, which reduces those numbers substantially and brings the pilot down to 7% for the first 10 years. Then it gets to 8 or 9%. And in 20 years, you get a 10% pilot. I've been doing pilots all over the state in the last five or 10 years. And you see pilots starting at 10% for the first three to five years to allow the project to stabilize. Because that's when it's starting to rent up and that's when it's most vulnerable. But we're seeing pilot agreements at 11, 12, 13, 14% over the next 20, 25 years. That's not the case here. This is waterfront property. Nobody's making more waterfront property. Are you convinced that this is a good deal for the city? Know that if Kushner is successful, there's no limit to what he can do in terms of profits. You are starting at a number that is 7% below the statutory minimum. There's no exceptions. You are at 7%. My partner will give you more detail on that. But that's an $8 million difference over a period of 20 years. You don't get to 10% until 20 years out. That's the next generation. Bear in mind also, this project started a generation ago. You're not wedded to Mr. Kushner. If you haven't read what he did, please do. Because it's appalling. It's outrageous what he did. He betrayed his brother, he betrayed his sister. The specifics are remarkable. There's another fatal flaw. Your ordinance, Chapter 432 of the Perth Amboy zoning ordinance, mandates for any project that gets a pilot, a 20% mandate when there are more than 200 units, 20% inclusionary housing. You're getting $1 million, which at best will buy maybe five new units somewhere in town or maybe 10 rehab units. But the obligation under your ordinance is 121 units on a, on a 602-unit project. That is an enormous gift to a redeveloper. And I've heard from many people passionately and eloquently about the need for affordable housing in the city. So you're creating waterfront property that will be at high rents with not one inclusionary unit included. That's a disaster for this city. On August 14th, someone mentioned that Mr. Kushner built Pure Village in Long Island. He didn't. He bought it. Again, this project began a generation ago. There was a four or four and a half million dollar guarantee in the original agreement. He's walking away without any responsibility under that original agreement. You have power, you control what's going to happen. It's in your hands. And I've never been to a public hearing where not one person came out and said something positive. What I heard here was remarkable. The sentiment of these people across the board is that, please, do the right thing. The power is in your hands. Again, Councilwoman Cruz, you're absolutely right. What do you know about this deal?
Not to interrupt you, we have, I'll say it after.
That's fine. But my partner has some information, some more detail. But you are, you are entering into a pilot agreement that is a remarkable gift to a redeveloper and is in violation of the statute and violation of your own ordinance.
Thank you. Wanted to make clarification. As council, we did have, as council, we did have extensive presentations. I was just asking for the public, but thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Michael Kosky. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Greenbaum Rowe Smith &amp; Davis. And I'm here tonight to discuss the ordinance that's up for adoption. I recognize that it has been a very emotional night for a lot of people in the room. So what I intend to do is just stick to the facts of the financial agreement, to the financial application that was submitted by the redeveloper and the financial information that was in there. And as my partner, Mr. Goldsmith, had indicated, based upon a review of that information, it's clear that the financial agreement violates the provisions of the long-term tax exemption law and also provides a extremely generous tax exemption. So for starters, it's important to understand the magnitude of the tax exemption that's granted under this pilot agreement. Based upon the financial information within the application submitted by the redeveloper, over the course of 30 years, the redeveloper will receive or benefit in the range of $60 million under this agreement. And that's not even considering the fact that there's a lower annual service charge or percentage that otherwise comes into play. Now, the main concern is the leasing structure that is imposed in this financial agreement. And what it does is it allows an affiliate of the redeveloper entity, so essentially the same entity, to serve as the master tenant and the redeveloper entity to serve as the master landlord. And what happens is the master tenant goes and collects the rent from the individuals living in the unit and then remits a percentage of that to the redevelop, redeveloper. And then the annual service charge is based, is paid based upon that as opposed to the entire gross revenue as required under the law. So what they're doing is they're artificially reducing the gross revenue of the property, which not only hurts the citizens and your constituents, but it results in $8 million less payable to the city that would otherwise be due without this master lease agreement. And it, you don't need to be a lawyer to look at the, this set of facts and know that something isn't wrong. But if you don't believe me, there's a case, Secaucus versus Jersey City, which had a very similar agreement that the tax court invalidated because the court found that the purpose of the master lease was to circumvent the requirements under the long-term tax exemption law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, Ed Sofield from 565 Colgate Avenue, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. I just want to tell you people that as a member of the Millses County Building Trades, the last five years since I retired, I've been going around and talking about pilot projects, especially in Woodbridge, South River, Saraville, New Brunswick. And I can tell you that the towns are broke. Every town is broken, there's no money, and they're afraid to raise the taxes. They can't raise the taxes anymore. In Saraville, we had a situation where the mayor had to say, Kenny O'Brien, the mayor had to say, hey, and I said it, I said, we're either gonna put, fix the roads or we're gonna go for this pilot project. But it was a halfway decent pilot project, it was a data center, and it was gonna put people to work. And it was gonna have jobs for the people in the town. This project that we're talking about is not gonna provide jobs for the people in the town. Kushner brings people, because we're picketing him right now in the Freehold Hall in the Monarch Mall. He brings people from Texas, from Mississippi, and he pays them minimum wage and they do garbage work. I told you, I pleaded with you, I said, the building trades is willing to take care of your people here in Perth Amboy and get you into our 20 different apprenticeship programs. But that's only gonna happen because that guy down there, that guy down there, put in his Dodge report, I will not use any union labor. And when he's doing the Monarch Mall, I will not use any union labor. Everybody in this room is a product of a union here. Policemen, firemen, teachers. Every school in this town is built union. Every school in this town. And the money, if you're not in a union, you make money because of the union. So I'm a union guy. But I want, I want work and jobs for people in Perth Amboy. And there is an answer. The freeholders, my good friends, who I can't pay for religiously. And I got the AFL-CIO award from Ron Rios and Shanti Nara for being an AFL worker, for helping the people out. The humanitarian award. And I can tell you that the freeholders of this, of this county are the best in the whole world. They built the vocational school, they gave you a park down here, they built the whole waterfront, they built the harbor front for the boats. They just, they're unlimited, they just give you whatever you want. They just gave us $500 million worth of work at Millses County College for a baseball field, it's gonna be a pro baseball field, Rutgers is gonna use it, for building a student center. You need to go to Ron Rios, you need to go to Shanti Nara, the freeholders, and tell them, you want a fine arts theater down here, and you want to keep the old police station as a museum. And it will provide the parking, it will provide the parking that you need to keep our waterfront open for the people to use for public access. This guy's gonna, we don't need crowds. We need less, less crowded, we need more space. The fine arts theater will supply jobs for people in Perth Amboy. It will provide parking, open the waterfront for them. And it'll be a museum for the historical Perth Amboy police station. So everybody works with this. It all works. So I know that you're up against it because the towns are dying for tax money. If you don't pass this stupid pilot project, it's no good. I'm about to get the pilot projects. But you need a pilot project because you gotta get the tax money because you can't afford to lay off teachers. Plus, even that the kids don't have. The policemen, we don't need to lay them off. There's a crisis here. But that's not a good pilot project. I defend pilot projects in Saraville and Woodbridge with the mayor. They're the experts. Get, Mayor McCormick will come here, and he'll tell you how to run a pilot, a good pilot project, and he'll tell you what, how we can get this town back on its feet. Work with the building trades, work with the county freeholders, and we'll help you out. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Pianet Muñoz.
Hello, my name is Pianet Muñoz. I'm translating. Do I have to say who I am or no? Virginia Morales, 745, 455 Berry.
Vivo en la 552 Sire Avenue.
I live at 552 Sire Avenue.
Y trabajo en la 35, acá en la Washington.
And I work at 35 Washington Street.
Sé que no se ha tocado el building de nosotros aún, pero...
I know that you haven't touched our building, but...
Yo sé que el proyecto que ustedes están queriendo aprobar...
But I know the project that you are looking to approve...
En un futuro puede ser que lo tomen en cuenta también nuestro building.
In the future, it might occur that our building will be demolished.
Solo quiero decirle que dentro de ese building trabajamos 150 personas.
I only want to advise you that in that building, there are 150 workers.
Que dependemos, muchas de nosotras somos madres solteras.
That we depend, that many of the women there are single mothers.
Hay personas de la tercera edad que aún trabajan ahí. Hay personas de la tercera edad...
Seniors. There are people that are of the older generation that work there as well, seniors.
Que aún tienen la oportunidad de trabajar dentro de ese building.
That also have the opportunity to work in that building.
Entonces queremos que ustedes al tomar una decisión...
And so we ask that in making a decision...
Piensen en esas 150 personas.
You actually think about those 150 people.
Que se quedarían sin empleo.
That would be without employment.
Son personas que llevan el pan para sus hijos.
They are the people that are bringing the bread to their children.
Y aparte nosotros pagamos impuestos y vivimos dentro de acá de Perth Amboy.
In addition to that, we pay our taxes and we live in Perth Amboy.
Así que al tomar la decisión, piensen...
And so in making a decision, please think about...
En nosotras, ya que veo que todas ustedes son la mayoría son mujeres, excepto los dos caballeros.
Think about us, especially seeing that most of you are women, except for the two men.
Piensen en nosotras, las mujeres que estamos trabajando dentro de ese, ese building.
Think about us, the women that are working in that building.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Before you start, I, a la persona que vino a hablar anteriormente, solo le quiero aclarar que en este proyecto no es tan medi paro. I, I, I just wanted to clarify to her that that company that she's speaking about is not included in this project. That's all I wanted to... He's going to...
Okay, Nick Ziri, the Admiral. I spoke earlier today, there's a few points that I wanted to make. I was running out of time, so I'll make them now. The one is, is the parking situation. This is not 19...
Bring it up a little.
This is not, this is not 1955, when one and a half parking places should be established for an apartment or a house. This is 2025. Most people have two cars. I realize some don't drive. But overall, you need two-plus car, parking spaces. This project, and I hope it's not, not, you know, authorized by any means, but I mean, we should think as, as, as people who are governing this town, even for future projects, one and a half spaces per car is not the answer. You are gonna just have swamps and swamps of people fighting for parking places on the street. As for this, this particular project, same way. One and a half parking spaces, 900 parking spaces for 600 homes, apartments, it's not enough. There'll be an overflow onto our streets, okay? And, and, and once again, Kushner is not the man. Kushner showed everything but a desire to build properly. He is, is a hoodlum. He's out for his own dollars. He makes promises and doesn't keep them and walks away from it and, and basically dares you to sue him. And most of the time, people are running out of money, so they're not gonna sue him. Now, the other thing along those lines is the taxes. Why in the world would you give him any sort of a tax break? When he walked away from building 22 buildings in Perth Amboy and only put two up 18 years ago, 16 years ago? We gave him a tax break at that point, he walked away from it. We should have been thriving with 22 buildings, people paying taxes and so forth, buying products, you know, taking care of the city. Why would we even think about giving him the opportunity to build again? Period. He doesn't deserve to build again. But why in the world would we give anybody who walked away from a deal originally a tax break? If he's so sure, he's such a great builder and could do the right job, let him do it at his own expense. Why would we want to do anything for him? And the easy answer is, everybody does it. Our answer to that is, nobody jerks us around 18 years later and we still have problems with what you built. You don't deserve any breaks. That's basically the, the two things I spoke about. And again, just for future, for, for your body, think about expanding that parking situation. One and a half parking places today is certainly not enough for anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't look good. Orlando Perez, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. A mayor of New York City says something interesting. A city has to survive on its own economy. That's taxes. What you've got here is not creating taxes, it's creating a problem. Remember, you got, that's what makes a city run, tax revenue. And these little pilots, this giving money away, freebies here and there, it's not hurting the city. Then, when it comes to a problem, oh, we have no money. I know a couple of towns, they got no money. They got no money to fix the water project. Why? Because of this. What happens to your surplus? We don't have a surplus. And one guy admitted it. You know, we taxed that project, we would have had the money. All this is doing is causing problems. And then, like I said, come to the finger point contest. This ordinance here, listen, I know what you gotta do. I'm not saying I'm against it. What I'm saying is, back to the bargaining table. You've gotta go back to the bargaining table. This is a little crazy here. Be careful with this. It can hurt you politically. I'm not making a political thing, but it can hurt you. That's why cities are hurting. These pilot programs, giveaways. It has to stop. Time to say, listen, it has to be taxed. How are you gonna pay for all these services? How? You gonna keep asking the federal government for grants? Bet you they're gonna get tired of looking at you. Oh, it's you again? Same deal with this state? Oh, we need state aid? Matter of fact, you can't afford your own city? What are you doing with tax money? What's going on? Oh, we gave a tax break. Do it. Oh, the wonder why? And you coming in my office, you want money? It's gonna hurt everybody. Look, go slow with this. Renegotiate, please. Table it for now. Table it. Put it on hold. Forget about Kushner, he doesn't care. Forget about him. You'll see him here, do you? He's not here. So now you have a problem now with this. This is gonna create you a problem. I'm sorry. Be prepared for some shocking news in the future with this. I'm not saying I'm against it. Go back to the negotiation table. We have to sit down and talk. We got a lot of complaints about this. Okay? Thank you. I know, I know you can work something out. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, good evening again, council members, council president, Ken Gonzalez, 110 High Street. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that there's sort of a them versus us kind of mentality that seems to sort of, it shouldn't be that way. I mean, you guys love the presidency of Perth Amboy as much as everybody here, there's no question of that. But please, just listen to the folks that are talking with you today to understand that they have some genuine concerns. I know for me, one of the most ear-opening things or eye-opening things that I heard was the fact that after all this time, the landing still doesn't have a permanent certificate of occupancy. That's shocking that we would consider giving the same developer another project to potentially screw up again. Earlier, I mentioned that the Kushner company had been the subject of a lawsuit and I had some looks. I just wanted to share very briefly, in 2022, just now three years ago, barely, Maryland Attorney General Brian Frash settled the lawsuit with the property management company owned by the Kushner family. Settlement was over allegations that the company charged legal fees, failed to maintain the property. Lawsuit alleged that Westminster Management failed to maintain properties, including properties that had mold, leaks, and rodent infestations. The lawsuit alleged Westminster Property deceives, deceived prospective tenants by showing them model apartments that were freshly painted with new appliances. What were the terms of the settlement? The settlement required the Westminster Management and other companies to pay $3.25 million in civil penalties and restitution. The restitution, potentially paid restitution to thousands of current and former residents of these developments. I want you guys, as you guys should, be aware of who you're getting into a relationship with. And we ask you to please think about this. You have an opportunity to be a turning point in Perth Amboy's history today. A huge turning point, for good or for ill. And when you walk away, I hope that you guys can look at yourselves in the mirror and hold your heads high that you voted the right way on this. And just before walking up, I got a little note passed to me for the attorney for Metaparrel, Mr. Goldsmith, that my understanding is that there is a, a comment on record from the redevelopment agency executive director saying that if this project ultimately proceeds forward, Metaparrel must go. That's what I'm told. That's not from me, but I'm just passing that along.
Thank you.
Folks, thank you all. God bless you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Ray Kalka, 2416, Sunny Goble. We used to have five firehouses back in the day. Sadly, that is no more. The former police station used to belong to the WPA. I don't know if anybody knows what the WPA is. And a former industrial company donated the building to the city. And they were the largest industrial company in the city back in the day. Please remove the three buildings and existing house from the plans. Performing Arts Center sounds better for a project along the waterfront to bring back the ferry service, to brighten up the waterfront and have that area restudied and relooked at. Crossness Apartments is in bad shape also. The units have leaking ceilings, roofs. And those people do not have a water view from their apartments because Kushner buildings are built in the way. Things have been unthought of, planned out the past 25 years and now. Where the YMCA is, that's where the firehouse is supposed to be built. But no. When building Harbor Town, Mucci mentioned building a firehouse on High Street and Hall Avenue. That did not happen. Kaba's administration should know better of having transparency. The city should stop neglecting the history. And this type of investment project does not belong here. Blueprints of the plans do not look right. They look ridiculous. Some redevelopment agency people should be replaced. There's no communication in the city hall. And I would think the kids, I think, I think the city, we want the kids off the streets and in schools to be in programs and learn positive things, to become good people. And the city should start caring about the city's history. Please save the building and donate it. They donated the city to the building. As Kaba says, becoming mayor, to continue to try new ideas and invest and relive our local history and embrace it. This is not a hard decision, as Russell O'Reilly would say, save the building. Now, this is Detroit. They're restoring an old building. They're in way worse condition than the former police building. And if they can do that, then Perth Amboy should restore the old police station and bring it back to former glory. It has potential. It is a perfect fit, a new purpose for the community. And hopefully, it's included for next year's so-called 250th anniversary and future, and past and future people of the city to tell this, this, this building's story and provide additional resources to the city and preserve the history and save the firehouse. There is a house being built on Eagle Avenue. It looks nice. The city should be building more homes of that style. And I think the city could knock down the first aid squad and build three or four homes there. The type of homes that's built on Eagle Avenue. Save the firehouse, reopen that, use the $500,000 grant money to, for improvements, update the building. If you're gonna add more apartments, then the fire department might have to add a fourth ladder truck, which is pretty crazy. I don't know if anybody understands that. They're supposed to have three ladder trucks. And currently, they don't. You only have one active, and the other one is reserved, which is ridiculous because the city is wasting money and time on other stuff when the fire department needs equipment. And their ladder truck is coming in 2028, what I hear, from 2018. So it's a 10-year age gap of not having equipment to serve the city. That's unacceptable. And the city, Wildit and now Kaba, they should have gotten that done already. But no, you're wasting money on trolleys, parks, 400K... 400K on ShopRite cards, churches and nonprofits, a million dollars there. And not everybody on that list deserves money on that list. I can tell you that right now. History is at stake. This is the last building that symbolizes what the city was built on. Industrial revolution legacy. Those, those people, those workers, they needed to make money. They needed to go to work. And that company donated the building to the city to have the police station. And unfortunately, Mayor Voss and the mayor before him did not update the building. Fire, EMS, and police should have stayed on High Street. But now here we are because nobody knows where the firehouse is on New Brunswick Avenue because you can't see it from New Brunswick Avenue. Because the YMCA is there. The firehouse is supposed to be there. But no. Now you got a school there. Now you got teachers parking in the fire department's parking lot. That's why they had to have their arms, to block, you know, teachers from parking in the parking lot. If they would have stayed on High Street, the fire department wouldn't need to worry about their personal cars being parked and issues with the parking lot. The firehouse on High Street is big enough. You got the parking lot, you got the building itself. And if you added more apartments than possibly adding a fourth ladder truck, you gotta hire more guys. I don't really get the money for that. But High Street Firehouse is big enough if you're gonna add a fourth fire truck. Please save the history. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jane Witkin, 37 Lewis Street in Perth Amboy. I spoke before for five minutes, so I'll only speak for a couple. As an old, increasingly old urban planner, when I hear in a development project the use of the term urban renewal, it is only to denigrate the city in which that project will be located. Urban renewal is an old term that I hate to hear now. Second thing I wanted to say is that that banner says, "We are a city of history, city of the future." The motto used to be, "City of history, city of firsts." Interesting that it doesn't say that anymore. The city of the future seems to be a city of warehouses and bad projects. Let me just tell you a few of the firsts, and then I'll stop. It was the colonial capital of East Jersey. It was where the Bill of Rights was first signed, where the first black voter after the Civil War voted. It has the oldest Episcopal parish in the state. It has the oldest continuously functioning city hall in the nation. And it is the only existing royal governor's mansion. So think of that and think of why the motto changed. The third thing is that one speaker just spoke about going back to the bargaining table, which obviously should happen. But it should be noted that the city law director is also the bargainer in chief for Para with Kushner. If that doesn't present a conflict of interest, not even the Outer Bridge Crossing can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Daniel Gonzalez, 129 High Street. Just about two or three blocks away, about the same distance we are from the planned Kushner project. Unfortunately, we're stuck with Kushner. It is what it is. They own that property, and they've owned that property for a long, long time. In these, in these times, it's tough to be stuck with Kushner with all the negative things that they say about him and all the negative things that come as a result of prior projects. We're stuck with them. Right now Kushner, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, only pays $113,000 in taxes to the city of Perth Amboy. Let me repeat it. Kushner, right now, if he leaves that piece of property there in perpetuity, would only be paying $113,000 in taxes a year. I know that I rode since when I was a child. I've been here 47 years. I rode my bike, you know, down the Esplanade that way. I am in down the Esplanade that way. When I go down Sudaski Parkway, it reaches all the way to what's gonna be the Borinkinir Park, which is something that we have to look forward to. And eventually, the Esplanade is gonna go farther than that. And it's gonna reach all the way to the bridge. I'm not sure what the bridge is called, the Victory Bridge. It's gonna reach all the way there. Which one is it? The Victory Bridge. So it's gonna, it's gonna reach there eventually. In this project for the Kushner property, it appears that the Esplanade is gonna continue from Smith into Washington Street. It appears that there, there is going to be 5,000 feet of retail space. It appears that there's going to be parking, excuse me, a, a park for children, as well as a dog park, as, as well as things that are gonna beautify that waterfront that we love so much. I know when I go that way and I look at the waterfront, I'm happy with it. But as I continue to walk, or bike, or drive by the Kushner property as is in front of Mete Power, it's disgusting. So we need to do something, right? And I think that unfortunately, the sentiment here is that the progress with this particular property is a bad one. My house is on High Street. And many of the people are at the current landings. If that property, if these apartments, these 602 apartments are built and they rent and they make money, it's gonna increase the value of all of our properties in a good way. So the original property, does anyone know how many units were supposed to be there? It was 2,200 in 2000. Or when it originally started, it was 2,200 different units. It's been pared down to 602, which means that we're not gonna explode as it was supposed to explode under Voss. It's gonna be tempered. $1.2 million is going to be paid in lieu of taxes for at least the first portion of the agreement of this pilot. $1.2 million a year seems to me that it's almost 10 times more than the 113 that we're getting. It sounds, that sounds good to me when I look at it. Now, I don't want some people in this room to not see the development of that property because we're getting older. I want to see that property developed. And I think I've seen the plans and it looks beautiful. And then I think it will help Perth Amboy's view. It will draw more people to Perth Amboy. And instead of driving by that blight place that's there now, they'll drive by beautiful styled apartments where there's gonna be a whole new group of beautiful people that appreciate the waterfront, living there. So for me, you know, it's a hard job for you all to be up there tonight, especially with all the, all this pressure, right? I can say I voted for all of you guys. And I'm gonna vote for you guys again because I know each one of you individually, and you're good people, and you care about Perth Amboy. Vote your conscience, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just, just to make a point.
Okay, okay. The person on the bike deserves respect.
I just want to make a point about Kushner taking.
I'm sorry, did you say your name and address? I'm sorry.
Olga Vargas.
Okay.
Regarding the waterfront area, I'm sorry.
Did you say your address?
Again?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Every time you come to the mic.
358 Richter Street.
Okay, that's fine.
109.
You don't have to say.
So the thing is that we are talking about the quality of the service that Mr. Kushner, Kushner brings to the city. I can see that the area of the waterfront is neglected. It's filthy. It's not clean. Nobody cares about that area. Every time I ask the city to please clean it up, they say, "It's private property. We cannot go there." Is that true? Well, well, somebody, that office with Mr. Kushner has to do something about that. The handrails are loose. The ceilings, they don't have even the bricks there. So what are we talking about here? Please, I, I, I les pido por favor that you are taking notes the whole time. Please, when you sit at the negotiation table, please think about everything you just heard here. Because that's information for, for you to negotiate the whole thing. Looking forward to see that happening. I'm really moved by all these people talking to you as, because you are our representatives. And I was appalled that not even one of you said, you know, "I don't agree with that. I have to, I have to think about this." But they are like, yeah, no, yeah. Like, like, it's, it's tough for us to understand why you are given such a great tax break. Maybe somebody will explain this right now? I don't know. But that's what I wanted to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Stephanie Bracita, 27 Ford Davidson Avenue. In relation to the fate of our historic resources, I would like to read to you part of an ordinance that in 2022, you sitting here voted for and approved. The city of Perth Amboy finds and declares that the quality of life in Perth Amboy cannot be maintained or enhanced by disregarding the historical and architectural heritage of the city and by countenancing the destruction of such cultural assets. The historic heritage of the city is among the most valued and important educational, cultural, and economic assets. As a matter of public policy, the protection, enhancement, perpetuation, and use of improvements of special characters or aesthetic interests or value is a public necessity and is required in the interest of the health, prosperity, safety, and welfare of the people. Therefore, the city of Perth Amboy wishes to provide for the protection of historic districts, sites, structures, and other landmarks and open spaces within the city in order to protect and improve the quality of its environment through identification, recognition, conservation, maintenance, and enhancement of historic districts, sites, structures, and other landmarks and open spaces that constitute or reflect distinctive features of the political, economic, social, cultural, or architectural history of the city and its distinctive physical features. Safeguarding the city's history, aesthetic, and cultural heritage as embodied and reflected in such historic districts, sites, structures, and other landmarks and open spaces. Foster appropriate use and wider public knowledge and appreciation of such historic districts, sites, structures, and other landmarks and open spaces. Foster a sense of community and a feeling of civic pride in the beauty and noble accomplishments of the past. Enhance the city's attractiveness to heritage tourism and other visitors and increase the support and stimulus to business and industry thereby provided. Make the city more attractive and encourage residents to remain in Perth Amboy, as well as attract new residents. Strengthen the economy of Perth Amboy and stabilize and improve property values herein. Promote the use of landmarks for the education, pleasure, and welfare of the people of Perth Amboy and its visitors. Prevent the unnecessary demolition and destruction of historic resources and promote adaptive reuse when feasible. Prevent the destruction of archaeological resources that could yield useful information about the history and heritage of the city, state, and nation. Resist and restrain environmental influences adverse to such purposes. And encourage private and public effort in support of such purpose. And by furthering such purposes, promote the public welfare, strengthening the cultural and educational life of the city, and make the city a more attractive and desirable place to live and work. Approved by you, this is the promise the city made to its residents and tasked the HPC to carry out. When the city and the city council destroys our historic resources, you both break that promise. You have the power to renegotiate the agreement and save our historic resources. And if you think that our historic resources can't be reused, take a look at Raway. They repurposed their old public library as a new gallery space and already have an exhibition. You have to be willing to fight for us and our historic resources. Renegotiate the agreement and protect our historic resources. Remember, when you destroy our historic resources, you destroy our history, and you can't get that back.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Real quick, Reverend Donna Stewart, Perth Amboy Area Branch of the NAACP. Thank you again for listening. I learn so much when I come to these meetings. I learn a lot from listening to people, you know, civics and information history. And looking, right here is Thomas Bundy Peterson in recognition of who he is and what he did. And it is Black History Month, and he was the first black person to vote. And it'd be counted after the 15th Amendment. And he was going about his merry way, just doing what have you, and was notified that he could vote. And there were people who were opposed to him voting because he was a black man. I encourage you all to have the courage, even if you have to stand alone, to vote no. Someone talked about Perth Amboy being the city of firsts. Be the first to say no. Don't be afraid to say no to this project, whether you table it or just vote no. The passion, the compassion, I think it's very important. It's also, there's power in property. And there's power in the ports. Don't give this person the power of our ports and our property, which is rich in history, it's rich in culture, and it's obviously rich financially for them to gain. Find a new way. I don't know what the answer is, but I know that he is not the answer. So I encourage you all to please think about being the first to say no. When the time comes for a vote, don't be afraid to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm so glad I'm here and not there. So Lisa Nanton, 32 Gordon Street. So myself, my four siblings, and my 29 cousins were all born in Perth Amboy. And I'm the only one who came back because I just love it here. And so in 1977, you know, I'm not gonna give you my biography, but in 1977, when my first husband passed away, we owned a home in Manalapan, five bedrooms on five acres. And I sold it for $65,000. And then I started hunting in Perth Amboy for a house. And the closest thing I could find for $65,000 was maybe a three-bedroom house with no land. I bring that point up because every inch closer to New York City is more valuable property. And so the most valuable things that we deal with are time, land. And then money is third. So it's no mistake that that land was grabbed when it was. But, so when I was sitting where you are, I remember the law director gave us a contract we were supposed to vote on. And that contract had us giving our beachfront property away for free in perpetuity. I couldn't believe it. Well, neither could the rest of the council, so we voted it down. Packed room with people that were enticed to come to argue. And, you know, we got yelled at, we got screamed at. And then, but then the second contract came up. And that was from this law director to sell our industrial property for $10 an acre. I said, "Who came up with $10 an acre?" Nobody could answer that. So we vote that down. So my point is, I think all the years that I've been back here, my frustration is nobody understands how valuable our property is. And we have to stop giving it away for dumb reasons. On the planning board for the last four years, almost all the applicants that came before us wanted to build single-family homes. And on little lots, you know? They were squeezing them in any place they could because people wanna stay here, they wanna. want to raise their families here, and they want to live in homes. And so unfortunately, I think the law favors developers, and that's part of the problem. So I just got a flyer today from the 19th District wanting to know what we want them to do. Well, I think they need to adjust those developers' laws because it sticks the cost a lot of times on the municipality. But, so when we were on the council, we did vote Kushner's projects down twice. Every single one we voted down became uglier and cheaper. And that's his mantra because he is a revengeful, spiteful, grouchy old man. And he's not going to be around 35 years from now, so I don't understand the push for that. But according to the ordinance, it just says long-term tax exemption, so I don't see how you can legally vote on that when it doesn't state the number. It's not a legal document. And I also, we talked about the Northgrave Firm. Mr. Northgrave was Kushner's attorney when I was on the council. So there's a lot of, you think that would help us, but so far it hasn't. So I just want you to realize that we are in a, in a period of like criminal corruption cancer. The country's suffering from that. And criminal cancer can't become the norm. So I'm just asking you, because this will be the nail in Perth Amboy's coffin if we just put these apartments down. It's Kushner's property, but Kushner doesn't own us. We are in charge of what he's allowed to do. And so far, everything he's given us sucks. Vote no. Vote it down and send him back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to, oh, okay, she's up.
Hello.
Name and address, please.
Imanaga, and I live in 40 Fayette Street. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and my fellow residents. At first, I wasn't going to speak at this meeting, but like many of my fellow residents were inspired to stand up and speak up, so will I. I just want to remind all of my fellow residents that we have choices. I encourage the council to do the right thing, but as an attorney, I want to remind everyone who is present that we have choices and we will move accordingly. And we will use our town elders, we will use our historians, we will use our builders, we will use our teachers, and we will use every resource that we have to do the right thing if you guys don't. So do the right thing. Listen to your people.
William Petrick, 790 Hornet Street. You know, one of the prior speakers, we have, we have compulsive liars and pathological liars, and we have defense attorneys who, who, you know, defend criminals, murderers, and they come up here and they think the Kushner project is just a blessing and a great thing and we can't do anything about it, which is a lie. He hasn't done anything with that property in decades. It's very simple. You take the property away from him. He's a developer who hasn't developed. One. Two, the property that he has developed, he did shoddily, and he didn't stand up and fix the problems. He pointed fingers at his subcontractors. You can take the rest of the property away from him. You just have to have the courage to do that. And I hear people back here, you know, other people coming to the mic saying that, table it. No, don't table it. No. I want to see five courageous people vote this nonsense down. This is ridiculous. I want to see five people, when the public is done speaking, all vote no. We've done it when we sat up there. We voted no because it's not good for our community. This does nothing for our community. It's enriching a guy that lives down in Florida who has no care or concept of Perth Amboy. It's just another place to make some money. And none of that is benefiting us. This pilot doesn't benefit the city of Perth Amboy. We get nothing out of this. Nothing. We're giving a tax, a huge monstrous tax break to Charlie Kushner, a convicted felon. And why'd he get convicted? He set his brother-in-law up with a prostitute, filmed it to give it to his sister so that, you know, he could break up their marriage. Okay? He's a, he's a scumbag. He's a sleaze. We don't, you should not be dirtying your hands doing business with him. You know, you got Bill, Bill Northgrave, a member of that, that attorney group there that, you know, is making money off of this. He's making money off of each of the pilots. That's why he's pushing it. And of course, he's tied in with Kevin McCabe, you know? Don't do business with Charlie. Vote this down and then work at taking the property away from him. Why is it at the other end of High Street, Rector Street, Water Street? We've got mansions, we've got the highest tax bracket in Perth Amboy on Water Street facing the bay. You look across from the property that you want to give to Charlie Kushner and you see multimillion-dollar houses in Staten Island. But here, all you can think about is building cheap apartment buildings. We want to increase the population of Perth Amboy because of course, they're all going to vote Democrat, right? Maybe not. Maybe not. But why do you want to overpopulate our four-and-a-half-square-mile town? Build single-family homes. Yeah, maybe build big homes. We are out of balance. We have too many apartments already. We don't, our sewer, you know, nobody speaks this. Our sewer system is overcapacity. They can't handle this. Charlie Kushner doesn't want to build storm sewers. He wants to dump all the stormwater in our sanitary sewers. So the rest of the taxpayers here in Perth Amboy are going to pay to have that volume pumped over to Saraville to be processed through the sewage authority. Okay? But you're going to give him a multimillion-dollar tax break. But he doesn't want to even spend a penny on storm sewers. How about our water? We're blending our water from, from Runyon Water Works now because we have clean wells and contaminated wells, but we don't have enough water from the clean wells to supply the city. So now we blend the water so that the, the contaminants in that water drop to a level below state regulations so that people here in Perth Amboy can wash in it, wash their food in it, and drink it. But we're going to build 600-plus apartments? We're going to use up more water capacity that we don't really have anymore? And you're going to let that happen? No, you should vote this down. Take the property away from him and then auction it off to smaller developers who are willing to build nice buildings, single-family homes or duplexes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public caution.
Move it.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Okay. We heard everything that had been mentioned tonight, and now I would like to call on NW Financial to come and go over certain things that had been explained here from the public, and he can present to you what is at stake right here. Okay?
Thank you. Good evening, council members and city residents. My name is Daniel Banker, and I work with NW Financial Group as the city's financial consultants. What you can see on the screen right now is a 30-year comparison to confirm the pilot is 30 years. I know it was mentioned several times that the pilot was 35 years, but this is to confirm that the pilot is a 30-year term. So on the left side of the screen, what you see is the current taxes being generated by the subject property. All of the lots combined result in a total tax amount of $320,000, of which the city receives about 60% or $190,000. So over a 30-year term, we're assuming that taxes increase by 2% a year. So if the property remained undeveloped, as is, over that 30-year term, it would estimate $13 million in taxes, of which 7.7% would go to the city. Now, if you look at that same comparison on the right, that is the currently proposed and what's being considered terms of the financial agreement. You'll see that in the early years, the number increases drastically, and that's because of the lease-up. There are 600-plus units here. It is going to take time for those units to lease up and rent up. So if you look at year four, which is what we're considering as the stabilization year when 95% of the units are occupied, the gross pilot is estimated to be about 1.25 million, of which the city will receive 95%, which is equivalent of 1.2 million. So you'll see, as compared to what the site is currently generating, in that first stabilized year, the city will receive $1 million more than it would undeveloped. Another thing that I'd like to point out is the developer is assuming quite aggressive rents, and because it is based on a percentage of revenue, it's unclear if those rents will be achieved. So part of the negotiation was to include a minimum regardless of where the rents end up. So the numbers that you see under the gross pilot column, those are minimums. Those are guaranteed pilot amounts that will be paid each year. And if the rents are higher than projected, those numbers will go higher.
Okay. Just for, just to, because to clarify certain things that were mentioned, and I know that everybody is saying, go back and negotiate. How many times have you been negotiating? I know you came in front of us before, we, we kind of gave you tasks to follow and, and you went back and came back. So I just want to know more or less the negotiation, how it went.
Yeah, absolutely. So I personally have been involved for, I believe, three years. So there's been several conversations back and forth between NW, the city, the developer, and we've come a long way in terms of where the terms of the financial agreement are today as compared to the original request. What I will say is, as mentioned in my, in my presentation several months ago, we take a look at all of the numbers in the pro forma, all of the assumptions, project costs, expenses, rent projections, cap rates, interest rates. And we focus on what the appropriate return to the developer is, and we base our pilot terms on that. So based on that analysis, we determined this project is not financially feasible under conventional taxes. Based on all the metrics we use, internal rate of return, yield on cost, net project value, if this project was required to pay full conventional taxes, it would not happen. So under, when considering that, we then take a look at the pilot scenario, length, percentages, and even under the pilot terms as they stand now, the projected returns require rents that are higher than what the city of Perth Amboy currently shows as available listings. The costs are somewhat aggressive cost assumptions, and it still results in returns that are at the low end of what is considered typical market returns for a project that costs $200 million. So we believe that the current structure as it stands today will, one, be a financial benefit to the city, and, two, will allow the project to move forward.
Thank you. You had your chance to speak while you needed to. He's just presenting you with the, with what you were bringing us to, bringing us. So he's presenting what the pilot itself presents. That's, that's all we are doing. No. Please, please, please. You got your chance to speak. Let him explain what he has to.
This was all planned by design.
No, this, sir?
Yes.
Please, you had your chance. You spoke twice.
What happened?
And then you spoke your, your mind, what you feel, and now he's responding to whatever you presented. And, and I, and I need your respect for him. Excuse me. Excuse me. So, anything else? Any question?
Nothing else unless the rest of the council has any questions.
The council has any question? I, I know we have spoken many, many times, but if you do, please do.
For, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I had a question. How did you come up with this calculation? What formula was used? You know, can you discuss a little bit of that?
Sure. And are you, is that in relation to the developer's returns or the pilot terms themselves?
Both.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as it relates to the developer returns, what we, we look at three different metrics. We look at net project value. Net project value is the difference between what it costs to build and the value of the project once it's stabilized. So if a project is worth less when it's completed than it costs to build, that's the first red flag that suggests that the project is not financially feasible. Why would someone build a project that costs $200 million that is valued at 160, for example? That's one metric. Second metric is internal rate of return. That accounts for the amount of equity that goes into a project, in this case, upwards of 60 or 70 million dollars on that $200 million project cost, and compares the annual cash flow every year for 10 years and assumes that the project is going to be sold after year 10. So that internal rate of return is the average rate of return based on that equity amount versus what you sell the project for. That typical market rate of return for IRR is between 10 and 15%. Under conventional taxes, it's close to 0%. And then yield on cost is also another metric to look at returns. That's in any given year. Typically, you look at the first stabilized year and you look at NOI divided by project cost. Typical market rate of return for that is between 6 and 7%. Under conventional taxes, that number is 4.7. Lastly, there's debt service coverage ratio, which is potentially the most important metric because it determines if a lender will be willing to provide the necessary funding to complete the project. Lenders right now don't lend below a 1.2 coverage ratio. What that means is the project needs to generate 120% every year of what the annual debt service is to pay back that loan. Under conventional taxes, the debt service coverage ratio would be below 1, meaning they would not generate enough cash flow to even pay off the debt service. So when you turn to the pilot scenario, the only line item that changes is instead of paying conventional taxes, your pilot line item is reduced, and that in turn increases the project cost, so generating potentially a positive net project value. Now, instead of being worth 160 million, the project is worth 208. When it comes to the IRR, that increases from that low 0% to 6%. And again, that's under the pilot as it stands today, when the typical market IRR is between 10 and 15. Yield on cost goes from 4.7 to low 6%, 6.2. So again, at the low end of that 6% to 7% target. And the debt service coverage ratio goes from under 1 to 1.25. So that, those are terms that allow the project to move forward when looking at net project value, internal rate of return, yield on cost, and debt service coverage ratio.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else?
Well, I just wanted to just make sure and clarify, just in simple terms so that everyone does understand. Currently, sitting there, that property not being developed, we are barely making any money from taxes because we are just like Mr. Gonzalez, Daniel Gonzalez said before, about 100,000 per year, right? So I just want to make sure.
So I just want to make sure that we understand that tax exempt does not mean we're losing money for the city. Is that correct?
That is correct, and...
Now...
The only thing I will say is, so right now, that number is not 100,000. It's 320, of which the city receives 190. But again, that is much lower than what the city would receive under the proposed pilot.
Underdeveloped. Okay. Now, also understand that the city is actually going to be making more money under the pilot program, as opposed to traditional conventional taxes.
So that is not the case. So if this project was to pay conventional taxes, the city's share would be greater than under the pilot.
Right. That's what I meant.
However, the idea of this project, as mentioned earlier, paying conventional taxes, is unlikely that this project would move forward under conventional taxes. So although that is a comparison that is looked at, it's really for illustrative purposes only because that scenario doesn't really exist.
And also, being that it would be a pilot, the administration can make the decision, along with the council, to allocate some money to the schools so the schools can somehow get some kind of money for it, so that not really losing money for the schools.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question. Can you repeat that again?
Well, if they would, you know, allow us to, we allowed them to speak, now I wish they would allow us to speak. So my question was, the administration, along, you know, with the, they can allocate some portion of the money. The administration with the council will allow, you know, we can come up with a certain amount of money to allocate for the schools, whatever we wish them to use it for.
Yeah, I believe so. If the council chooses to do that, I believe you can do that on an annual basis.
That is a decision on the council, not the administration. Uh, you know, it's a decision on the council.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead.
And just to clarify, that's not something you'd put into a pilot agreement. So what's in the agreement can't say anything about the schools. It has, that's something that comes from the council.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Any more questions?
Yes. So speaking of, in terms of decision-making, I know that the council president did mention negotiations. So we did table this project from last year. In terms of the specific plans, and please correct me, administration, and correct me if I'm wrong, our power is in terms of approving the pilot. There's only so much, we have tried negotiation. Has there any, has there been any changes? Or is it the same exact plan? Just because there's some people who are new today as opposed to last year. So in terms of the specific plan, if you can just clarify that, because I know in the past, not today specifically, but that question was asked.
So you're talking about the plan, about the project itself?
The project itself. Exactly.
So I don't believe there have been significant changes to the project itself, at least since I've been involved. But obviously, this spans over many more years than I've been involved. So since the beginning, it sounds like it was a much larger, more dense project. But for the time that I've been involved, it's pretty much stayed the same in terms of the project itself.
In terms of other questions, does it go through you? Apart from financials, such as, I know what was mentioned was water specifically, any complications? Would that go through you, or is there another representative?
Uh, so we have, and NW doesn't do that type of study. I'm not sure who at the city or, you know, what professionals would be able to provide that information. So as it relates to water, we did not do an analysis related to that.
And then my next question, I know I have asked this before. I did live in the landings when I first came in the council, so I would have, it would have been a biased approach, but now I don't. How is the accountability different? And I know that this was asked last year, is when we, when we did have this. How is accountability different in terms of managing the storefronts? And I know what was mentioned was the gym. So how was that different from the specific condo association towards the plan of this?
So I'm, I'm not sure I can answer that question. As it relates to something that the developer will be required under the financial agreement is to ensure that the appropriate pilot amount is being paid each year, because it is based on a certified, or it's based on an annual gross revenue. They will be required to submit an annual audit. I know that doesn't answer your question, but as it relates to financially making sure that they are paying the right amount, every year, they will be required to submit a certified audit by an independent auditing firm that identifies the annual gross revenue every year so that if there is an annual true-up necessary, meaning that they would owe additional amount, the city would be able to identify that and send an additional bill. But as it relates to making sure that they are following the guidelines as it relates to the storefronts and things like that, I think that would probably be described in the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement. However, I don't get involved much in that, that document.
Um, just to answer the first question you asked, Dan, underneath the redevelopment agreement, Kushner is in charge of all infrastructure upgrades. So if there's necessary upgrades for the water or the sewer, that is something they have to handle under the redevelopment agreement.
Perfect. And then I know there were, um, probably towards you, um, questions, of course, with traffic, and I know that that comes after project is approved, the traffic studies, and all of that for that area. Because I know that is a concern regarding congestion in that area.
Yes, Councilwoman, they still have to go to the planning board.
Yes, yes.
And at that point, that's when things like the traffic studies would come in, and they...
Just want you to reiterate, like, what usually comes? So that way, just so people know what's in our control, what's in planning board's control, just in case those don't know.
Yeah. That's usually at the traffic, I'm sorry, that's usually at the, the traffic studies are at the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions?
And...
Uh, excuse me. Is the public session is already closed? No. Excuse me. Excuse me.
No.
No.
Mr. Goldman.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I just said, "Thank you," everyone.
Wait, hold on. Thank, oh, wait.
Okay.
Two questions. Last one, I do agree with. I know that what was brought to us, what can, are you able to speak about the affordable housing?
Yes. So as part of the agreement, and that's just been worked, actually, you want? Can, Ms. Vasquez is here, and she helped with that. If you want to come and speak to affordability...
Sure, sure. I know she explained to us, but a few others had questions.
She can answer it much better than I can, so... And for those who don't know, Ms. Vasquez is the director of the redevelopment agency.
So I didn't hear all of the questions in regards to affordable housing, but I can speak to the ordinance and to the contribution that's in the redevelopment agreement. The ordinance that creates a set-aside or inclusionary zoning was amended and includes language, Jessica should have this language as well, that projects that already had redevelopment agreements and/or designation were excluded from that set-aside requirement. So this project particular, was one of those projects excluded from the set-aside requirement. In regards to the contribution, that was something that while we were working with the fair share to get our, sorry, to get our declaratory judgment approved by the courts, fair share had to support our project. And we had folks from different organizations, including Make the Road, YMCA, the Jewish Renaissance Foundation, those organizations that we work with closely here in Perthamboy with affordable housing. We had multiple calls with them and fair share to come up with a contribution that would be acceptable. And everyone agreed that the $1 million would be used, not for our trust fund, but to address issues that cannot be paid for with our trust fund. So our current trust fund pays for rehab projects, affordability assistance, and energy upgrades. Affordable housing specifically, excuse me. The contribution that we will be receiving here was made on recommendations from fair share and from the organizations that I mentioned to address issues such as legal assistance for residents who don't make enough to represent themselves against landlords with illegal rent increases, et cetera. So these million dollars will be used for affordability assistance for projects that are not listed in our redevelopment fee trust fund.
Okay. Anything else for Ms. Vasquez?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then another point was raised. One fact that we can't negate is that the Kushners do own the property, and it was mentioned previous meetings, this meeting as well. What is the process, if any, to just give it, you know, if you can address that?
To, so the Kushners own the property.
Yes, yes.
It's their property.
Yes.
We would have to have a valid public purpose to just take property away from someone. And it's not something that is easily done, and it's not something that I think the Kushners would fight, the Kushner...
I would just...
Would fight the project if we tried to take it by eminent domain.
Thank you.
I know there was some concern, and I know that there's some people here from the Kushner group, and maybe if they can come up and address certain concerns. You already had your chance to present your concern. Now we're...
We have him come here.
Okay. Do me a favor. Can you sit over here and next to Mr. Green?
Thank you, Council President. I'm Michael Summer, Chief Development Officer from Kushner. And I will first say that I, I respect the, the passion of the group. I really do. And the love for the city and the concern for the city is, is very obvious and evident, and I can't help but respect it, honestly. And I, and I get some of the concerns that have been expressed. And just for the record, we have presented previously before the redevelopment agency. We presented previously before council. And, you know, people obviously don't recall those, and, and that's a shame because I wish people had an opportunity to ask questions at that time. What I'll say is, there is a lot of history here. And as it relates to the Admiral and the Bayview in particular, I was not at the company when they were developed. I frankly don't know very much about the, the buildings. We don't manage the buildings. They're condominiums, and therefore, they're owned individually by owners. I'm not going to sit here tonight, based on what I've heard and based on what I've heard anecdotally over the years, and claim that the development process was perfect. I'm certainly not going to claim that. But what I am going to say is that today, under my leadership, we are currently developing 10,000 multifamily units, pretty evenly split between New Jersey and southeast Florida. We have 4,000 units in New Jersey alone that are under construction, and we are frankly looking forward to moving this process forward here in the city of Perthamboy. A lot of people spoke of the current conditions of the property, and I agree. It is, it is blighted. It is underutilized. It is not a pleasant thing to drive by, and certainly, I'm sure, not to live by or even live in the same vicinity of. The cure for that, frankly, is redevelopment. And the only way to, the only way to catalyze redevelopment is for a significant investment to be made. And as Mr. Banker just explained, the investment is just not feasible by way of ad valorem taxes. And the, without the pilot, frankly, the project wouldn't only not move forward because it wouldn't be profitable, it would not be financeable. It's very simple. It's not a matter of someone who has money wanting to make more money, someone who has money being greedy. At the end of the day, it's a business venture. And there isn't anyone in their right mind, in this room or anywhere else, who goes into a business venture to not make money. So what I'm here to say tonight is, you have me here representing the company and representing the leadership of the company, letting you know that we are devoted to moving the project forward. We are devoted to making a significant investment here in Perthamboy. And I can only tell you that based on the ongoing work that we have throughout New Jersey and Florida, that we are dedicated to making sure that we will develop a first-class luxury product here in Perthamboy.
Excuse me. Everybody respected you when you came to the mic. I expect the same thing for everybody else, no matter who it is. You were not interrupted. You, you were allowed to speak your mind. Okay. Now he's, they're addressing the concerns that you brought up. Okay. Okay. Continue. And I know one of the main concern that I think the public and the residents have is, with this project, why guarantee us that it's going to be taken care of the way it's presented to the community?
Sure. Yeah. Look, it, it's, it's easy for me to offer guarantees, and, and guarantees are just words. We have a redevelopment agreement, which we're bound by. And that lays out, the financial agreement is an entirely separate document, but the redevelopment agreement lays out the business terms by which we're bound. It's signed, it's in effect. The redevelopment plan is in effect. The zoning is therefore in effect. And the project that we intend to move forward with is as of right as it relates to the redevelopment plan. So you can, you can take my word for the fact that we intend to do something first-class here, but you don't have to. The redevelopment agreement has all the protections in there that the city required, and it's a signed document, and it's in effect.
Thank you. Please, don't let me take you out. Please. Yes, I can take you out. I mean, you cannot disturb the meeting. You spoke. Okay. Okay. Excuse me. You spoke. Anybody else wants to ask any question?
No, I just... I think it's just the main concerns that I was asking earlier, the water, the construction, the oversight, trust.
I'd love to speak to, I, I appreciate you bringing that back up. No, I appreciate you bringing it back up. So a, as someone said earlier, and it may have been Mr. Banker, it may have been the attorney, we're, we're not here tonight, obviously, moving the project forward in terms of the, the full design and the infrastructure that's required. We have to come back before your planning board, assuming we, we move forward tonight with a fully-designed project that not only has to be approved locally, but has to be approved on the county level, and then has to be approved on the state level as well by the NJDEP. So have we undertaken the studies as it relates to the water infrastructure and the sanitary sewer? We have not. That's part of the process that we'll undertake as, as the project is designed and as we pursue both the local county and, and state approvals.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? See none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, I need, I need a motion. I'm sorry. I need a motion to...
Adopt.
Adopt.
Move it.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Just wanted to say a comment before, before I make my vote. So as mentioned earlier, there's two facts that we cannot argue, which is, the property does in fact belong to the Kushners. That I know that rebuttal, and that I know it's a fact. It is an eyesore. However, I did live in the landings at one point, and it, it is a, the landings itself is a nice sore, the, the specific empty storefronts, and as well as the, the current property as is now. Like, why, this is my opinion, and my personal vote. Why wait to look, to a negotiation, to a contract, to now beautify it? Why can't at least maintain it as it is now? So for this point, I do not agree with the current project. As mentioned earlier, there's only so much negotiation that we can do. And I am aware, I am not, how do I explain it? I'm, I'm realistic. I know that there's so much we can do in terms of, you know, in terms of development and building. It's not our property, but since I don't have that control and I don't have that power specifically for this reason, considering the prior and current challenges, I will not go over all of that. I know everybody's mentioned that. You can read it. As mentioned, thank you all for being here. Thank you all for the employees, for your presentations, the Kushner team as well. You know, I do appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's votes, but for that reason, I will respectfully decline and vote no.
Councilwoman Morales?
All right, before I make my vote, I just want to explain my vote as well. Us sitting here, we have a task of making really, really, very difficult decisions. I understand that. And it's decisions of, making current decisions of things that were decided many, many years ago, which we had nothing to do with. So, with that being said, hearing everything that has been going on, this property has been undeveloped for the past, what, 30 years now? And barely making any money on it. Barely making any money. For me, I would rather move the city forward, make money, make money on this pilot, okay? Make money on this pilot, we're making money on this, okay? We do not, harsh reality, we do not own that property, we cannot just take it away. You own a home. I go, it's not that simple.
Excuse me, excuse me, let Councilwoman-
You own a property, I cannot force you to say, give it, give it to me, sell it to me, no, we cannot, so-
Excuse me!
I think maybe you should start picking people up.
Okay, can you please?
I don't want to be raising my voice, please. And I respect everyone's opinion, I, I respect everyone's comments, but I have to make the hard decision to move, to do what I feel, I feel is best for the city of Perthamboy, and I'm going to vote yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time, respect and attention. Since everyone decided to make their comments first, I will continue the trend. And so it was mentioned earlier that we were put here to lead the community, and that takes a lot of courage, it takes a lot of courage to go through those steps, to stand up, to support, you know, everyone within the community and do what's best for the community as a whole. It's even harder to have to go against some loved ones or friends that you may know in the crowd, for the betterment of the community. And so, we took an oath to do what's best for the community and to lead the town, and I'm going to stand on that oath, and I'm going to vote yes, because it is what's best for the community as a whole. So my vote is yes.
What was your vote, I'm sorry, yes?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Well, I'm gonna not comment, because whatever I say is just gonna snowball, but to add what some of my colleagues have said, we inherited this mess. And from some of the people that came here today to make the comment, you guys sat up here too. And you know what? Unfortunately, we're stuck with this. You know what, yes we are. I'm not gonna get into a tit-for-tat with you and the audience. You know what? Somebody told me a long time ago that they were gonna hold their nose and they were gonna do what they had to do. Well, I don't agree with this, but I'm voting yes. And you can make all the comments you want, and you can shake your head all you want, okay? But you know what, you're not sitting up here. So, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day-
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Sure.
You know what?
Or, they could have done the bigger part-
It's always easier said than done. And you know what?
You think it's easy as it is?
Your comments are inappropriate. Respect these women up here. You may not like what we did, but you know what, keep it a little civil. You know, we get called names, you call us out, you know what? Everybody got a chance to talk, we didn't say anything to you. And you know what? It is what it is. And you know what, and as far as everything else is concerned, this has been on the table for a long time. And you're coming at the last moment in time.
Councilwoman Tejada?
Okay. It doesn't matter what I tell you, I only gonna tell you, I appreciate your voice, I appreciate what you said tonight, and I listen. And I'm gonna tell you, my position here is, is to do the best for my town. The town that I know ever since I came to this country in 1974. I live in this town, and I, I want the best for this town. And we cannot continue having things pushed to the side because we don't want to take the tough decision for the town. The same thing happened with the water, the same thing is happening with this property. And my vote is yes, and it's for you, for the town that I love so much. Okay. Let's continue. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, I need a motion, oh.
I heard a lot of BS here, William Petrick, 790 Harnett Street, a lot of BS. And of course, we have a couple of ethics violators up there. They've been prosecuted.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me, this is about agenda item that doesn't have-
Agenda item, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Exactly.
That doesn't have hearing.
So, in any case, eminent domain, you can take any piece of property you want in town for a good reason, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public- Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, you were looking straight ahead.
Can we maybe give a minute for those that are, so that we know-
Let's wait for the people that are leaving and the way, the people that are staying.
No, but that way we just know who's trying, you know?
I, I thought you were just walking out, that's why.
What I want to say is, I've been involved with the city, oh, Christine Dispenzieri, the landings, and I'm not gonna comment on the landings or anything, but I was a chair and a vice-chair of both the planning board and the zoning board. And I know how a meeting's supposed to be conducted, okay? What you did wrong, which is what I think what everybody is upset about, is the fact that you had three experts speak after you closed the meeting, and it wasn't open for the public to ask questions. Whenever you have an expert, you're supposed to give the opportunity to the public to ask questions, and you didn't. And they were important, important experts. You should have had that meeting either reopen for people to ask questions or not, but it's too late now, and that was a major problem. And I don't know what can take place at this point, because of the fact that you went against conducting yourselves in a proper manner. And I'm not saying that disrespectfully, but what I'm saying is, you're having a meeting, you're having public here, and you opened questions for the public, now also you bring in three important experts, you need to reopen it for people to ask questions. And I think that's where the disruption came about, people getting upset that they couldn't ask questions. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, anybody else? You cannot speak on the, on the ordinance, because that's not, okay, you have to speak on agenda item.
I just wanted to say that the other towns in Middlesex County, Edsoville, Colgate Avenue, Perthamboy, the other towns in Middlesex County, every time there's a chance to buy up a piece of property for parking, they have a commission in Woodbridge and Saraville, Keyport, and the whole state, except for Perthamboy, and they buy up, buy up homes, they buy up businesses, they provide parking. When Sandy came along, the whole front of the waterfront, the property down by the boats, was all wiped out. They were, the people down there were allowed to rebuild. And the parking could have been an issue there, where the houses were all condemned, and they were allowed to rebuild those, those houses. Parking has always been a problem in Perthamboy. As some of the older people in this room know, that Sears &amp; Roebuck's, five-car dealerships, everything in Middlesex County came out of Perthamboy. Perthamboy has nothing left, because of the parking. They never dealt with the parking. So what Woodbridge does, and Saraville does, they have a Kiwanis Club, and they have a group of businesspeople that buy up the properties and they provide parking. If you go to Keyport, if you go to Southamboy, Southamboy, who's Southamboy? Carteret, all behind the stores, they have parking, in front of the stores and the back of the stores. We only have street parking. Everybody left Perthamboy, and you know it, right? Everybody left Perthamboy. Sears &amp; Roebuck's, the Red Sox, right? I have a doctor at Perthamboy Market Street, I can't go there anymore, because I gotta take an Uber there. Could be, the old middle school, which is the old high school, what is it called, the Guinness School? I mean, those teachers parked there, they parked there, and then the doctors are few there, I can't get a parking space. So I'm gonna be forced to get another doctor. I'm so glad that Perthamboy got, finally got a fishing boat. I'm 73 years old, I went on that boat when I was five years old, with my grandfather. He took me out there once a week during the summer. People came from all over to go on the boat, Perthamboy to fish. They came from Jersey City, they came from Somerville, because they didn't want to go down that kind of. Finally, I don't know who got it there, but they did a great job of getting a party boat there for the people in the summer and the kids to enjoy it. But there's still a parking issue, and I wish somewhere down the line, you guys might want to deal with a parking issue. And what, the way to do it is to set up a bank of money with the businesspeople, and the mayors of the towns, whatever, how they did it, and you just buy these places up. And Forge, if you look at Forge, they, they bought, built it all, they took an old house, they bought it, next to the post office in Forge, now you got parking, just as an example. And one other thing, in 1969, those people up there, half of my uncles, my fathers, I see a lot of fathers here, Goldsmith, all these other guys, I see all their dads up there. In 1969, the state of New Jersey took 400 houses from Perthamboy. They came to my father and said, you got three months to get the hell out of here. We lived on Florida Gold Road, my father worked hard, he finally got a nice house on Florida Gold Road in Perthamboy. And he and 400 other people had to move out, and he got, I think they gave us six months to get the hell out, and they said that's the right eminent domain. My father said, I'm a veteran.
I'm sorry, you have to address-
I'm sorry, my father said, I'm a veteran, I was over in Burma, in Burma and fighting the Japanese. I come back here and you throw me out of my house? He just wanted fair value, couldn't get it. Right of eminent domain. So, when you talk about right of eminent domain, it is a real thing. 400 people in this town lost their houses, had to relocate, it was a terrible thing, but it happened, thank you.
Thank you. Just remember, I want people to speak on agenda item only.
With all respect to the council, if I may, I think they're gonna take this to court. You're looking at a court issue. They're gonna take it to court, they're gonna fight it. I'm only, I see you coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I just, just want you to know.
Stephanie Bracida, 274 Davidson Avenue, you guys were talking about- Stephanie Bracida, 274 Davidson Avenue, you guys were talking about not being able to eminent domain the property, but you were ready to put that up for a vote for met apparel. So why is this any different? Personally, I, I don't approve of eminent domain, because you could one day come from my house, or my neighbor's house, or wherever you want, and claim it's for the purpose of the city if you wanted. So, I, I personally don't approve of that, but when I started talking at these city council meetings, I honestly gave you all the benefit of the doubt, because I had never attended council meetings before, I've never met any of you before, so I didn't know what to expect. But now I do. When it comes to the fate of our historic resources, I know now that I cannot count on any of you. And I apologize to Councilwoman Cruz, I know you voted no, but it was almost positive that all four of the other people would vote yes. And a vote for no from you and BJ, and if Councilman Puccio had voted no, maybe something could have been done to save our historic resources. But now I know that I cannot count on you. I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, anybody else?
Good evening, Council, I had to run out before, I had a small fire, but there was two other agenda items that I was tied to. The first one was the PAL Carnival, so it's our third annual PAL Carnival, so something positive for the community, July 2nd to July 6th, at Zdowski Park Field, so you're gonna approve that hopefully shortly, so on behalf of the PAL, thank you. Also, side note, the PAL headquarters on Madison, we're not functioning all week long, we just started karate, so a lot of good free programs for the community with 30-plus kid waiting lists to get in, we're doing that, so a lot of other things coming up.
Tutoring, tutoring as well?
Tutoring too, yep, and then we, we're partnered with the YMCA, there's another grant that we're hopefully receiving, that a lot of computer workshops in there too, so it's growing like we promised, but you know, the third annual carnival, that was the only week that the carnival company could get here. So that's why it's that week, and if the fireworks happen that week, they'll just make the waterfront that much more exciting on that, that Thursday, which wouldn't be the day. So, that, and then just on behalf of the fire officers, they couldn't be here, but their contract is gonna be up for ratification, so I thank you to Mr. Green and the mayor, and council if you approve it, but it was a fair, quick negotiation, but I think all parties came to a good agreement, and it serves them well, so thank you on behalf of the fire officers, because it's late and they couldn't be here, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for all the things that you guys are doing in PALS, I think it's wonderful.
Like I said, it's, it's just grown and grown, and now that we got the brick and mortar location, and all the utilities finally switched to our name, like the, the annual gala and the carnival, like, that fully funds our operations, and all of our instructors, they don't take a dollar, so all the money we bring in now, covers the building, and then we're just able to expand programs, so if there's any volunteers out there that are looking to start our program, you know, they could reach out to, you know, President DeJesus, and we could work something out, but if it's gonna benefit the kids, we will fund the programs. And boxing, partnered with the city to use the, the boxing gym, that's, that's also always sold out, so, and you'll see the pictures on the social media of the different stuff going on, it's just, it's just good stuff to see, so.
That's amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you want to speak? You just have to come up to the-
I mean, I know you like all-
State your name.
My name's Alfonso Fora-
Say your name and your address first.
Alfonso Fora, 647 Carlo Avenue. I know y'all like approved like the project, I'm not here to debate or argue, but can you tell me in your words how this will benefit the community, like, not here to argue just how this will better-
That was the public hearing that we just had? And that's already closed? So, in this public portion, you can speak about agenda items that does not have public hearing?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comments.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, reports, Fallon Barczewski Tax Collector submitted the monthly report of collections for the month of December 2024. Number two, Supli Clooney and Company LLC CPA report of audit of the Perthamboy Redevelopment Agency for years ended June 30th, 2024 and 2023. Jill A. Goldie CFO, Comptroller submitted the following investment report for the month of December 2024. Number four, revenue and appropriation status report as of December 2024. Current fund, water, wastewater utility, parking utility, harbor side marina utility. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance of the city of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 Sec of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. And this is about deletion, I need a motion?
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perthamboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 Sec of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about amendment. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Ordinance number 194-78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as Chapter 414 Sec of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about parking near driveways. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman- Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yeah.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Okay, look over the, I think we should leave the R88, take it individual, and R89, those are, the first one is the, the, the selection for the, for the appointing person, a member to the zoning board for four years, that's the 88. And R89 is for the alternate, two years.
Yes.
Okay, we'll pull those separate. Anything else that you want to pull?
81.
81? Okay, anything else?
I'm good.
Everybody? Everybody's good? Okay, so the consent agenda is R67-225 through R80-225, R82-225 through R87-225. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. R81-225 consenting to the appointment of Rose B. Morales to the Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency for a term expiring on December 31st, 2025. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Epstein.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. All right, I need, does someone want to?
Make a motion.
Make a motion for R88 determining on the two interviewees that we had today for the four year.
I'd like to make a motion.
For the four years?
For the four years, for Christopher Alvarez.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. R89, I need a motion to appoint Joe Pawolczuk.
Move it.
I think I learned. Um, to the second, to the alternate, at the two year.
I make a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Okay, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? This is about anything, doesn't have to be on the agenda. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, council comments, Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone, I know it was a long night, so thank you for those who are still here, and those who were here earlier. Want to elaborate on what Councilwoman Morales mentioned with PAL. I'm working as well in the school district, I do appreciate the extra addition to the tutoring and the extra support services that PAL offers, as it offers great benefits to our students, to our parents. Additionally, I did attend with Councilwoman Morales, the tattoo shop grand opening. It was absolutely beautiful, the entire ambiance, I am so proud, and I hope that, I know that Councilmember Torres, when he was here, I know he was a big advocate for that, but the entire council definitely voted for that as well. And as Black History Month is approaching, please look at the city website for the different activities that will be happening, especially in the library, as the library does have a lot of great activities, so keep in touch with Facebook, the website, and then lastly, I just want to say, you know, I respect everybody, no matter what, and I love my city, and regardless of how I vote, I just want the best and to maximize, you know, the optimal potential of what our city could be. That's pretty much it. Once again, thank you all, and have a good night.
Okay, Councilwoman Morales?
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, it was great to see so many people here tonight, and then voice out their opinion. I just wish that every council meeting would be like that, and everybody would come and hear exactly what's going on. And not only the council meeting, I would appreciate if people would come to all the other board meetings, the planning board, the zoning board, the para, and get more informed about what is actually happening in the city. These things that are coming up to us actually goes to the, the boards prior, so you could have your say there at that time, and also here at the, you know, meetings, the council meeting. So it's, it's out there, it's in the website, so it, you know, people are informed, and unfortunately, people just choose to come at the last minute when a lot of things have already been, you know, in the process, and it's hard to make changes at that point. So with that being said, it was a very difficult decision. We here in this board, we have to make decisions that have been, like Councilman Puccio has said, have been kicked the can, you know, from one administration and one mayor to another, and we are here making the hard decisions, and trying to make the right decision, and it, unfortunately, reality, it's not going to serve positively for everyone, but we are trying to make the best decision for the majority of our residents, and that's what we are here for, and what we believe, we will make a decision with what we believe is the best for our city. Anyway, with that being said, Councilwoman Cruz and I attended the grand opening, and the historic grand opening of our first tattoo studio here in Perth Amboy, and thank you to Councilman, former Councilman BJ Torres for that, and it was really a great addition to our business community. Also, just want to say it's Black History Month, there's going to be a lot of events coming up, I believe there's one coming up at the library, 22nd, I think, if you guys be interested to attend that, and Friday's Valentine's Day, so have Valentine's to everyone, and good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm going to piggyback off of my fellow councilwomen. So today was by far in my experience, the most people that I've seen here, and I just wish that this was the case every single time that we are here, that way everyone could have their opinions and be a part of the decision-making, and understand the whys we're making these choices, and, you know, even though we may not all agree, we can agree to disagree respectfully, and it's not what you say, it is how you say it. So again, I, I respect everyone's opinion, I know that we are all here for the greater good of the community, because we care and love our community and everyone in it. Also, thank you to PAL for everything that you do, there's so many children in Perth Amboy, and because of everyone stepping in, I know it's not just PAL, other programs, the YMCA, everyone else steps in to do their part, but we really do appreciate everything that everyone does for the children of this community, it makes a difference. Black History Month, there are a lot of events going on, the Puerto Rican Association also has an event, the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. And again, I just wanted to say that we appreciate your thoughts, your concerns, comments, but at the end, we have to do what is best for the community. Everyone may not understand why we have to make these choices, or, you know, all the background information, but these choices are made with all the efforts in the world and, you know, thinking of the future and history of Perth Amboy. So thank you so much, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to go into a long-winded thing, but I'm going to just say a couple things. You know, number one, yes, I had an ethics charge. I did, but nobody really knows what that ethics charge was. I got an ethics charge for going to a union meeting. That was my ethics charge. I didn't steal any money, I didn't do any of that. So, you know, when former council members can come up here and take shots at me, right? Remember, he who's without sin may cast the first stone. So, you know, I'm upset about that, I got my punishment, I took it to trial, they sustained the charge. I wasn't indicted, I wasn't convicted, you don't get convicted of an ethics charge. You don't get indicted with an ethics charge. With that said, you know, as far as the old police station is concerned, what about the dark history of that building? All the people that committed suicide in those jail cells over the course from 1932 to 1980? I know in my time working there, seven people committed suicide in those cells. So, you know, now that's the other, the other dark side of that, of all the people that developed cancer that worked in that building, I know of 10 people that died from cancer that worked in that building, and I'm one of the people that developed cancer from working in that building. So at the end of the day, I feel really rich for history, I do. But you know what? There's a dark side to that building. So at the end of the day, you know, we come up here, we make hard decisions, we weren't like former council members that kicked the can down the road, or were afraid to make a decision. We made one. And you know what? I held my nose on this one. I'm not too happy about it, but it needed to be done. And that's the hard part about being an elected official, is sometimes you got to make a hard decision. Unpopular, but they have to be made. And you know what? It's too bad we make these comments at the end. If I started this comment earlier, we'd be here all night, because everybody would be trying to take a shot. So now they can listen on Channel 34.
And unfortunately, they leave before they, we can make our comments.
And all due respect to the ladies up here, it's not right to disrespect them with your comments. So if you're watching this at home, two weeks from now, respect these ladies, they respect you, we respect the audience. So, next time you come here, bring your A-game and be civil.
I have one more comment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I just have one more quick, quick comment. Being courageous seemed to be mentioned a few times, and, you know, I kind of stuck to that theme, and I just want to personally say thank you to our president, the ladies Tejada, and to Councilman Puccio. It is very courageous of them to do this, to take these beatings all the time, to be disrespected, have people giggling, over speaking, and, you know, not following the rules of engagement, and sadly, from educated individuals who know the rules of engagement. So I just wanted to personally say thank you for being so courageous, for leading this community, because if not you, then who? Many can say whatever they want to say, but you guys are the ones sitting here, taking the beating, time after time, speaking up, making these hard decisions, they might be against everybody else, but because we love our community, want it to sustain itself, to grow, we have to make these choices. So I wish my arms were long enough to hug both of you, but thank you so much for doing this time and time again, and being so good at it. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Peralta.
And tonight, I just want to say thank you for everybody who came up and presented their concern. It's a lot of concern, and I understand, and that's why we brought you the expert at the end to, to address those concerns that you had. We don't want a back and forth and screaming at each other, because we need answers to what your concerns were, and that's why the meeting works the way it does. Also, like everyone said here, we have to respect our opinion. We listen to you, and many people say, oh, you just sit there. No, we're listening to your concern, we're letting you express what you, you feel about the subject. But at the end, we do have to make the decision that is good for this town. We all love this town, you love it, you're looking at it from your perspective, we're getting the information that we feel that is the best for our community, and that's what an elected official does. So, and that's what we're doing. Enough is enough to let everything stay still, not make any progress, not move along. We run with, with the idea of making Perth Amboy a better place to be, and that's why we're making this. We make, we can make a mistake maybe 20 years later, or maybe 10 years later, or you might say, you know, that decision that you made, it was wrong, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree if it is that what happened. Because one thing that I do is, my vote is my conscience, and I'm going to stick to it even if I made a mistake. And I, I mean, I, I respect Ms. Cruz's vote, because that's what we have to do, that's what we were made, this is how she feels, it's okay, that's her decision, and that only proves that all of us are here making our own choice, not everything that comes, people who come to the mic and express how they feel. They were here, they didn't make decisions, and now it's easy to blame it on us when we make the hard decision that the town needs. So with that, I said, happy Valentine's Day, happy Black History Month, it's something that we should really be proud of, our first voter, black African-American person voted here in Perth Amboy. So let's, let's say, yes, we vote for Perth Amboy, and, and we're here to do the right thing for it. Have a good night. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Have a good night, everybody, I'm sorry, I see Ms. Vasquez.
I'm sorry.
A little tired over there.